I would like to call to order the City Commission meeting. It is January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the time is five P. M. We will, as we always do, start our meeting off with a moment of silence. Just like for you to keep in mind those who are suffering loss as a result of this pandemic. The numbers are still heading in the wrong direction, so a moment of silence, please. Mr. President, can you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance. Unified at the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do see a number of faces in the audience, some of whom may not have been in before. I would just like to read our rules of decorum. Officials shall be recognized by the chair and should not interrupt the speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal acts are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly. Offenders may be removed from the meeting. Thank you. Ms. Johnson, are there any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, item seven point zero A is being added to the agenda, which is Resolution number eighteen dash twenty-two F, which authorizes the use of general fund discretionary fund balance for the purchase of police vehicles.
All right. Very good. We'll now move to consent. Do we have any cards? Consent. Okay, very good. Do we have any questions, commissioners, on consent calendar? All right. Hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of the consent calendar.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign here and no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now to item seven point zero A. Resolution number eighteen dash twenty-two F, authorizing the use of general fund discretionary fund balance in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one dash two thousand and twenty-two to provide expenditure appropriations in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars for the purchase of police fleet vehicles related to the COPS grant. Grant number two zero two zero U M W X zero two two two, officer positions. Ms. Johnson.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the Commission, public. For the record, Fay Johnson, City Administrator. I'm actually going to fill in for the Police Department and present this item, given the state of affairs that they were engaged in today. So item, Resolution number eighteen twenty-two F is, as you've indicated, Mayor, is for the Board's consideration of discretionary general fund unassigned fund balance to purchase fifteen new police patrol vehicles. So just by way of an overview, to put this into context, back in July of two thousand and twenty, which was fiscal year twenty, the city, through the Police Department, was awarded a three-year COPS grant of three point seven million dollars. And I do want to indicate that that grant came with a match requirement over the three year fiscal period. The grant was implemented in fiscal year twenty-one. It was to fund thirty police officer positions. Also to note is that capital equipment and vehicles were excluded from the funding. In fiscal year FY twenty-one, as we all may recall, the general fund experienced significant revenue loss to the tune of over seven million dollars. So in terms of balancing the general fund back at that time, it required us to consider a host of budget reduction strategies, one of which we reviewed fifteen officers' positions for potential reduction. However, under a provision in the grant, it allowed us to maintain those positions and fund them by the grant. The FY twenty-one budget did include the grant a match for the officers' salaries and benefit, as does the FY twenty-two budget. However, the capital equipment and vehicle funding was not included in the operational budget. That was targeted to come out of discretionary fund balance. When you look at the strategy that we employed for FY twenty-one, by maintaining fifteen existing positions, we had sufficient vehicles in the fleet, so we did not have a need to come before the Board for funding for those fifteen vehicles back in FY twenty-one. When we look at where we are now in fiscal year twenty-two, the fifteen remaining grant-funded officer positions are now filled. Therefore, there is a need to now bring in line the fifteen vehicles. So the funding is requested, as I've indicated, from the discretionary fund balance dollars. I do also want to underscore, based on the data and the research that the police staff has done on the cost of the vehicles, the city, like most municipalities, are subject to the supply issue that has increased the cost of vehicles, and in our case, of approximately eight percent of what we thought it was going to cost us. So when we look at the breakdown of that nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-eight for the fifteen vehicles, it's broken down, as is indicated on the slide, the five hundred and fifty-two thousand for the vehicles themselves, and then the upfitting of the two hundred and forty-eight, two hundred thousand, police radios of seventy-nine thousand, and then the vehicle network of forty-five thousand. I want to bring to the Board's attention that if there are any funds that are not utilized of the nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, should it be approved, those funds would go back into the general fund reserves. And as we look at the general fund reserves, we're projecting that the discretionary fund balance has a balance at the end of FY twenty-one of about eleven point seven million dollars. I want the Board to keep in mind that the eleven point seven million includes that three percent amount that we are required to have by code. What we started doing last year was to separate out that three percent in an effort to protect it from being drawn down below what the code required. In terms of the discretionary amount, the portion of this eleven point seven million, we're estimating is somewhere in the ballpark of about six million. Once we go through the finalization of the annual comprehensive plan, the Board will get a presentation on the fund balance, and all of that will be broken out in detail. But for the purpose of tonight's discussion, we can project that approximately six million of the eleven point seven million is discretionary fund balance. But that eleven point seven million picks up that three percent, so I do want to have that on the record. Again, should the Board approve this request, that will leave a balance of approximately ten point eight million. Staff recommends Board approval of Resolution number eighteen dash twenty-two F, and I'll take any questions that the Board may have.
Thank you very much. Questions? Commissioner Shoff, Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Administrator, for the presentation. Certainly very supportive of making sure law enforcement gets the resources that they need. I just want to make sure that as we're looking at our funding resources going down the line, I know we have a lot of vehicle needs throughout the city. In this particular case, we're just talking about the public safety vehicles. This was, I believe, phase two of the plan. Going forward in funding, I anticipate, you know, vehicles are going to age out of the system, et cetera. What is the plan going forward to make sure that we are kind of renewing that funding source, so that as vehicles age out of the system, we do have funds identified, not necessarily out of discretionary funds, but out of maybe capital planning, et cetera, so that we can kind of establish that path forward?
What we are focusing on now, and I think we are probably the better part of fifty percent there. If I can take the Board back to the July-August work sessions that we had on the fleet vehicle situation that we found ourselves in. The former Support Services Director indicated in his PowerPoint that we had about ten million dollars plus of unmet vehicle needs, because for some years, we were not able to fund vehicle replacements on an annual basis. So we're in a catch-up situation. Of that ten million, the Board approved six point four million from the rescue funding. That eats into that ten million. So you have that one bucket. That, again, puts us over fifty percent of catching up. However, you still have vehicles that will come online in terms of what would be a vehicle replacement plan, had it been in place, in terms of funding. The Board took the first step to get us back on schedule with a vehicle replacement plan by funding one point six million in new money in this year's budget. So we've already encumbered, or are encumbering, the six point four million for the catch-up. We are looking at what vehicles need to come online, based on age, condition, mileage, and all of the other criteria that we need to consider out of that one point six million. So again, that will help us begin to maintain new vehicles being purchased. And then when we look to start the budget process for FY twenty-three, the intent is at a minimum to maintain that one point six million that the Board approved this year, and that will be the beginning of a consistent vehicle replacement plan.
Thank you. And so just to clarify, the intent is we're playing catch-up, in essence, with some of the funds that we had approved. And then ongoing, in the regular budget, we will include regular budget allocations to address, kind of take a bite out of catching up with some of that, as well as addressing the moving target that keeps happening with vehicles aging out of the system.
That is the intent.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I had the same question. I guess additionally, I know that we were talking about the six million we used from the American Rescue Plans from the first half of the money that we got. Is it possible that we would be using the second half towards some of these other vehicles that might be coming online?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question, Commissioner Fox.
I know that we'll be getting the second tranche of money from the American Rescue Plan. Would that be, are we considering that to use for any of these additional vehicles that might be coming?
It is not being contemplated to the degree of what we utilized from the first tranche for this reason. We were able to use the six point four million from the first tranche under the provision of lost revenue, which was the six point four million. We projected our lost revenue to be seven million plus. So there's a very small delta between that six point four million and the seven million. Based on the final rules, which are now being reviewed in conjunction with legal, we think that the only ability we're going to have out of the second tranche, you know, for lost revenue, would be that delta between that seven million of lost revenue and the six point four. So whatever we can use under that provision, we will, and we'll bring that recommendation to the Board to use it for vehicle replacement, but we have to wait and really get up to speed on the final rule and what exactly we can get out or utilize out of the second tranche.
Other questions? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of Resolution number eighteen dash two-two F.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign here and no opposition. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item seven point one, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number forty-nine eighty-five dash twenty-one, amending the downtown master plan zoning atlas to create the North Railroad Avenue, Nora District, and public hearing and first reading of ordinance number forty-nine eighty-six dash twenty-one, amending the chapter ninety-four, article four, downtown master plan regulations for the new Nora District.
Excuse me, Mayor. This is, in fact, a quasi-judicial matter that would go with your other quasi-judicial matters, so if you want to go ahead and do your disclosures.
Okay. It wasn't marked as such. My agenda. Commissioners, I need you to make your disclosures, and we'll begin with Mr. President.
You can keep it the same number, seven point one, and then also your disclosures for the items.
So wait, wait. You want me to move it back to the, it's on public hearing here.
It is listed under, as public hearing, Mayor, but in fact, it's a quasi-judicial.
So do you want me to wait until we get to quasi-judicial, or we're going to hear it now?
It's a quasi-judicial.
So we're going to move this back to the quasi-judicial section?
Correct.
This is the only item under public hearings, and then we move into quasi-judicial, so it would be the whole thing there.
So this is the only item under public hearing, so we have no items under public hearing. So we'll proceed with disclosures. Mr. President, if you will make your disclosures, please.
Okay. If you could just bear with me one second here. As to item seven point one, I have not had experte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. As to items eight point one. Eight point two, eight point four. I have had experte communications with representatives of the developers, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. As to item eight point three, I have not had experte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. City Attorney, do we need to make disclosures on eight point five, even though it looks like it's going to be continued?
No, you did not.
Okay. It says on your agenda, eight point five.
Is or isn't being continued?
The agenda says it's going to be continued, but the staff's indicating they're actually going to hear it, so go ahead and make your disclosures.
Yeah, we need to disclose on eight point five.
So we are hearing eight point five tonight. Okay. Need to do a better job of getting this agenda prepared properly, people. Okay. Go ahead and make your disclosures, please.
If I didn't make my disclosure as to item eight point five, I have had experte communications with a representative of the developer, I have received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. As to items seven point one, eight point one, eight point two, eight point four, and eight point five, I have had experte communications with the developers, with representatives of the developers, and with residents. I have received written communications only via email, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. As for eight point three, I have not had experte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, nor made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Fox.
As to items seven point one, eight point one, eight point two, and eight point five, I have had experte communications with the developer representatives and residents, I have received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. As to matter, item number eight point three and eight point four, I have not had experte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Did you mention eight point five? Okay. Commissioner Shoff.
As to items seven point one, eight point one, eight point four, and eight point five, I have had experte communications with developer representatives and neighbors, I have received written communications via email, I have not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, nor received expert opinions. As to item eight point two, I have had experte communications, I have received written communications from both citizens and developer representatives, I have not conducted an investigation, I have made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. As to item eight point three, I have not had experte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, nor received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Warren.
As to matters, seven point one, eight point one, eight point two, eight point four, and eight point five, I have had experte communication with developer representation, representatives and residents, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. As to matter number eight point three, I have not had experte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you. Mr. President, you need to amend your disclosure.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This only pertains to item seven point one. I have had experte communications with the developers involved, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Madam Clerk, can you swear in all witnesses for seven point one and eight point one through eight point five?
Everyone wishing to speak on items seven point one and eight point one through eight point five, please stand and raise your right hand. You swear the testimony about the other be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You may be seated.
Thank you. Now, item seven point one, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number forty-nine eighty-five dash twenty-one, amending the downtown master plan zoning atlas to create the North Railroad Avenue, Nora District, and public hearing and first reading of ordinance number forty-nine eighty-six dash twenty-one, amending the chapter ninety-four, article four, downtown master plan regulations for the new Nora District.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner Anna Maria Ponte, City Attorney for the Record. This item is a complement to the item that you heard on November twenty-ninth for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, so I'm not going to go over all the background information about the Nora or the Bressford Park area. I'm going to go straight to the explanation of the changes that we are proposing. As I mentioned, this is the follow-up item to the item that you heard on November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, for the Comprehensive Plan. This is the item that will do the rezoning of the industrial chic district into the new Nora District, and the rezoning of the portions of the Bressford Park District also into the Nora District. And will also include the amendments to the downtown master plan urban regulations to implement all the changes for the Nora District. The first set of changes are related to the zoning atlas, is ordered in forty-nine eighty-five dash twenty-one, and basically includes changes to the four figures on the zoning atlas to create the new Nora District and replace basically the old industrial chic district with the new Nora District, and also includes portion of the Bressford Park District that now are going to be included in the Nora District. The same figure two is going to be amended with the similar changes, and the figure four, that has the street classification, is going to be also modified to reclassify some of the streets based on the new role that these streets are going to play in the new district. For example, the North Railroad Avenue that is currently indicated as a secondary street, that is a lower category of the streets, is going to be reclassified as a primary street, because it's now going to be a more important street with a more best and friendly environment and a new role within the district. In a specific, the figure three, that is the sub-district boundaries, that serves the role of our zoning map, will include all the new boundaries of the new sub-districts. The industrial chic district five will be converted into the Nora five, industrial chic district two will be turned into the Nora two, and then at the same time, as I mentioned, some parts of the Bressford Park District residential will be Nora two, and some parts of the Bressford Park District five will be rezoned as Nora five. These will basically create the new boundaries of the entire Nora District and the redrawn boundaries for the Bressford Park District. Important to note, the base development capacity for these districts and the height and the new Nora District will remain the same as the previous districts, so will not alter the development capacity of the traffic concurrency exception area. The second set of changes are all in ordinance forty-nine eighty-six twenty-one and are amendments to the downtown master plan urban regulations. First, we include a new description for the new Nora District that will include information to characterize the district as a mixed-use district with the transitional height from the core of the district to the highest points along Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. We also include the new tables for the building requirements for Nora five and Nora two that establish basically the base building envelope for these districts. And we are also including changes to the Bressford Park District residential and Bressford Park District five that will update things like the density limitations for the Bressford Park District residential will be increased from the twenty dwelling units per acre to thirty-two to allow additional units within this residential area, and the Bressford Park District five, the density limitations will be removed. Was originally forty dwelling units per acre, now it's going to be removed. And other minor changes, for example, an increase in the footprint allowed on the third floor of the Bressford Park District residential, that was discussed with the residents and property owners on Eighth Street, and they wanted that ability to have additional square footage on the third floor, so those changes were introduced. In addition, we are including some miscellaneous regulations to basically implement the new Nora District, like allowing, for example, residential, commercial uses along residential portion of the railroad avenue that is Bressford Park residential, but commercial uses will be allowed in there, and providing some regulations about controlling the commercial uses along Ten Street to be able to have compatibility with the residential uses on the sub-site. Another set of big changes introduced are regarding to the TDR incentive or receiving sites, that this is what will make the area now attractive to accomplish new development and being able to have the additional development capacity. So the figure four thirty-five is proposed to be amended to allow the portions on the north side of Ten Street to have additional development capacity and height, and also some portions, or the portions south of Seventh Street, to have also additional development capacity and height. So this table shows how the base height and FAR will be increased on those areas. They are all achieved through the transfer of development rights, so again, it does not affect the transportation concurrency extension area for the downtown, but they will have to acquire the TDRs to be able to achieve the additional capacity. These also follows the proposed scheme where the transition of the height, and the height is accomplished on the edges of the neighborhood, so the core of the neighborhood is maintained in terms of the height. We have worked very intensely with the developer on trying to accomplish that the building mass for these proposals is compatible with the low scale of the neighborhood through additional setbacks and transitions for the buildings. In addition, I want to go over a little bit of some creative strategies that we are implementing for this district to allow the move of development capacity from the core of the neighborhood into the receiving site. So we are implementing a strategy that is called, we're creating a TDR sending site specifically that is called Nora-Bressford Park District Special Sending Side Area, that will allow the structures within this core area. that will allow the structures within this core area to be transferred their unused development capacities to the receiving sites on the Nora District. These will be allowed for structures that are eligible for historic designation, but also other structures that necessarily the property owners do not want to designate it, but they will be able to transfer. They will also allow to transfer the development capacity for those structures that are actually reconstructed as long as they meet the character of the district. So this is something that is new and we are introducing for this particular district because of the nature of the, of the character that we want to preserve in here. And these are those two examples of what legacy structures could be. I mean, some of them could be eligible for historic designation, but if the property owner does not decide to designate a structure, they will be able to still allow to transfer the development capacity. In addition to that, we are implementing a new strategy also to transfer TDRs from sending sites as public open spaces, but we have that currently under the TDR program. But in this case, we are allowing the creation of temporary public open spaces to transfer their unused development capacity. And the example that, the picture that I have is like a temporary open space that was created on the Heart and Soul Park while the park was fully completed and designed. That was something that would be like a temporary open space. So if a property owner wants to create these temporary open spaces, they could transfer their unused development capacity, use it in a new project, and then at the time of new construction in this temporary open space, they will have to bring back the capacity and buy it from another source. So that's also something new that we have not used somewhere else, but we think it could be beneficial for this district. So it's creative ways to allow these to move forward. And just, it's important to note that this is only allowed within the Nora confines. We are allowing the same system for temporary surface parking lots, so they will be able to do the same strategy to transfer while they are ready for redevelopment. In addition to those kind of more innovative strategies, we still have in place the typical TDR. So those, we have identified specific structures within the district that are eligible for historic designation, so those property owners could transfer, designate their structure and then transfer their unused development capacity and sell their TDRs. In that case, they will also be able to transfer them not only within the Nora but outside the district and they will be eligible to use or apply for the ad valorem tax exemption. So that's for the structures that, the property owners that want to go ahead and designate the structures with the formal process of historic designation. In addition to those changes, I just want to mention and remind you that we are doing the rezoning of those two parks for the TDRs, the Flagler Station Linear Park and the Jose Martí to be able to transfer some additional TDRs from this. But that's kind of a side amendment that we're doing. Just to explain you the process, we have been working on this since a couple of years, but the approval process started last year. So we went to the Downtown Action Committee and the Planning Board to get the comprehensive plan amendments approved. And we went also to the Downtown Action Committee or Planning Board to get the zoning and land development regulations and the zoning atlas amendments approved. They went ahead and then we presented the comprehensive plan amendments in front of you on November twenty-ninth. And then we sent those amendments to the Department of Economic Opportunity and they are on the review right now. As soon as we receive the approval from the EO, we'll bring this back to you with the whole packet, comprehensive plan amendments, zoning atlas, and rezoning, and urban and land development regulation amendments on February seventh. Up to this point, we have not received any objection from any other review agencies, so we expect a positive approval from the agencies. In terms of community outreach, we have done extensive community outreach on several public hearings where all the notifications of all the meetings have been sent to all the property owners around the area and within the area. And we know also Joe Forst from Place Project, that is the partner on this development, it has done also additional outreach for the community. Based on that, staff recommends approval of ordinance forty-nine eighty-five dash twenty-one and forty-nine eighty-six dash twenty-one, based on the data and analysis presented in the staff report and based on the finding that the amendment comply with all the amendment standards found in section thirty-two of the LDRs. As I say, Joe Forst from Place Project is here and he would like to say some words about this.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon and good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm going to be as brief as possible. This is actually the eighth of nine public hearings, so this has been presented several times. So just a quick review of what we're doing and where we're going. The four main pillars of what we're trying to do is to revitalize an important part of downtown, create new commercial offerings and enhance public space, convert industrial relics into contemporary community assets, and provide diverse housing to support the growth of downtown West Palm Beach. For us, this project is of critical importance for the entire downtown. As you can see from our location, you know, we're right at the northern edge of the downtown master plan, clearly with Good Samaritan Hospital, who's one of our biggest supporters. As we transition further north to Northwood, this project really has the opportunity to really connect the downtown and really bring more vibrancy and connectivity along Dixie. Also, you know, we're a ten-minute walk from the Bright Line Station in the core of downtown. So in terms of a location that absolutely deserves a best-in-class, world-class project, this is it and we think we have a plan and a program to bring that to life. So in terms of where we are, it's Nora, your neighbor. These are some of the things and the great benefits that we'll be creating. This is a rendering view of our Main Street. Again, this is a street where we own and control all of the real estate along this street, where we'll be creating this vibrant Main Street feel as well as open park space, which is going to be a great public benefit, as well as parking. As those of you who obviously sit at the CRA board know, we also have a full infrastructure plan. We'll be redoing all of the, all of the water and sewer, undergrounding the power lines, creating a curbless street with fourteen-foot sidewalks. So it's going to be quite a public realm and quite a destination for people to visit, both locally and regionally. An additional rendering view taken from our Ninth Street angle facing to the north and one more from Seventh Street. So this is the southern sort of anchor of the project, again, facing to the north. As Anna Maria mentioned, and she obviously covered all of it, so I'll be very brief. The whole premise of the master plan is that of gradual transitional zoning. This plan actually has more preservation and conservation of existing character and scale and it does have redevelopment, but there are some unique features. And I think the beauty of what's been constructed here by the, by the city planning staff as well as Pluse Urbia, who was the planner who assisted with this, is really having a diverse type of housing typology and different uses within the district. So as you can see on the left side, bottom of the screen, that's a sort of a typical bungalow-style home that would exist between Eighth and Tenth Street. Those are getting preserved through the zoning. The next image is that Tenth Street where you start to get to the transition. As Anna Maria mentioned, there's a requirement for all residential uses along Tenth Street, also for a three-story max height to create an appropriate pedestrian and sort of residential aesthetic and character as we transition to the higher intensity. And then in just a, an image of, you know, the larger-scale buildings that will be allowed as you get closer to Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. I did want to stop here for a moment because you've heard it before and I thought it would be nice to take an example to actually explain how your affordable workforce housing program works and why this project as a standalone will create more affordable workforce housing units than the rest of the downtown combined. So the interesting feature that we have, as Anna Maria mentioned, is that there's no changes to the base FAR of these properties. So if you take the area that you see studied here, which is between Tenth and Eleventh Street, this is about a four-acre parcel of land. It has a hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of existing in-place capacity. This plan, under an eight-story product with a three-point-eight FAR, would lead to a total of five hundred thirty-six thousand square feet of development rights. The difference, the way that the Affordable Housing Workforce Program works is that the difference between what the capacity allows versus what's in place has to be transferred in through the TDR program that you're very familiar with. This project alone has a shortfall of three hundred sixty-eight thousand square feet that would be supplied through TDRs coming from other places within the downtown and other places within the north sub-district. You then take a twenty percent discount for common areas, which means that there's two hundred ninety-five thousand square feet that are subject to the twenty percent affordable requirement. So in this specific example, this is a project that has about four hundred eighty units. This project, to be built under this zoning code, would require that eighty-one of those units be affordable workforce housing units, which as you know, twenty-five percent would have to be below sixty percent of AMI, twenty-five percent below eighty percent of AMI, and the remaining fifty percent below a hundred. So when you think about making true affordable housing a priority in the city, not only do we commend the work that you've previously done, making this codified, but this is a project that actually brings the vision of what you had put into code actually to life because of the way the requirements were through the TDR program that's already in place. And then the last piece I wanted to touch on is just really the care and responsibility that we take on a project of this magnitude to be an engaged neighbor. So as Anna Maria mentioned, this is again the eighth of nine public hearings where this project has been presented. The city did its own outreach, so they contacted over three hundred and eight parcels through the public meetings and the neighborhood workshops that the city sponsored. But we thought that given the magnitude of this project and really the overwhelming support that we had, that we should do more engagement and talk to as many people as possible over the last many months to ensure that we were communicating the right program and making sure that we had people that really believed and bought into this vision because we think it's so exemplary for the city. In terms of specific support, you know, we've talked to everybody around us. We have support from the Chamber of Commerce, from the CRA, from Old Northwood, from Good Samaritan. The image that you see on the left shows in the study area how many parcels of support are actually exist. So every parcel that's gray or green, we have active letters of support for. In full disclosure, the gray parcels are parcels that we already own and control. Just some additional examples of outreach that we've done. We did a great networking mixer December first at CitySide. December third, we were at the Philosopher's Club. December eighth, we did a DNA meeting, which was incredibly well-attended. That's what you see in the bottom right. And really, I mean, the enthusiasm for the project was palpable. We then again did another community mixer at the Salvation Army on December ninth. And then we did the, another meeting with the Northwood Neighbor Association on January eighth, where they gave us unanimous support for resolution of support. Again, we've been out talking to everybody that we possibly can. Here's a few pull quotes from, from people that we've been working with, which you can read on the screen. And lastly, that's it. So thank you very much for your time. Obviously, any questions that you have, happy to address. And same with Anna Maria. We really worked on this in a collaborative form. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anna Maria, did you have any more?
No.
Okay, very good. We'll proceed to questions, comments from the Commissioners. Commissioner Warren, and then we'll go to Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Anna Maria. Is there, can you go to the slide that shows the demographic of Bressford Park? I believe that that was in there. We went past it during your presentation.
During my presentation?
And while we're reviewing that, yes, go right ahead.
The, is this the one that you were looking for? Okay.
No, go right ahead, Joe. I mean, Mr. First.
Thank you. No, I was just going to add that the city did additional demographic research on the history of the neighborhood, which is not included in this presentation, but that obviously we've spoken about at times. So we can speak to that as well if you would like.
Go right ahead.
Yep. So in previous public meetings, there was conversations about the history of this neighborhood and there were some statements, excuse me, apologies. There were statements that were made about the historical African-American nature of this neighborhood. And that's not what we believe to be the case. The city, on its own accord, had already done a full research project about the previous ownership and historical sort of facts about the ownership of the neighborhood and there was, this was not in any way, shape, or form an African-American neighborhood. There was some reference to, of course, the historic northwest, which sits to the west of us on the tracks. But in terms of the, the original dwellers and occupiers of this neighborhood, it was not an African-American community. And so the city did the research just to ensure that the facts that were being presented were accurate.
Thank you. Mr. First. Ms. Aponte. The TDR program, I've had people ask questions about what the TDRs are and how they can participate. Those people that are eligible, is there a way that we're communicating with them? Or is there a possibility that we can do a workshop to help educate them about TDRs?
Yeah, we can definitely do a workshop. I have, have meetings with some of the property owners on Eighth Street that are the main property owners in there that have questions about how the TDR works. But yeah, we definitely can do a specific workshop to educate anyone how the TD, different options of TDRs could work in this neighborhood.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is to the TDR program as well. For me, that's one of the most important aspects of the plan that we have here because it is one of the direct benefits to the people actually living in this neighborhood. So my question was broader in looking at our TDR program and how we function in the residential environment. Because we're used to talking about TDRs as it pertains to open green spaces and throughout the downtown. How do we determine which neighborhoods we look in zoning to have TDR programs in and which that we don't? I ask from a very selfish position in that there's a number of historical neighborhoods throughout the north end and District One that I think could largely benefit in home improvements and being able to spend those TDR values on their actual properties and improve property values. And I think it's a great program to help homeowners invest in their own homes. So if you could give us some details on that?
Yes, Commissioner. The TDR program is only specific for the downtown area. That's the big difference. We have had people asking us about implementing the TDR program outside the downtown in the historic districts that we have. That is not something that we have in the regulation. And the reason why it's the TDR works in the downtown because the downtown has a specific limited development capacity. So that's why when you have a limited development capacity, the only way for you to increase it is if you transfer from one location to another one. That is not the case outside the downtown. It has a different type of or sets of regulations that work a little bit different. So right now, it works only for the downtown area. We have specific properties or buildings in the downtown that are identified and we have a map and a list of eligible structures. And in terms of the residential, I mean, several, within the northwest neighborhood in particular, there are several properties that are identified. Most of the time, the ones that have so far taken advantage of it have been churches, but some, we're starting to see some smaller structures to take advantage. In Providencia Park, I think we have one single family that was identified and they transferred the TDRs, but most of the time has been commercial properties.
So in order to move into a place where you had a TDR program, you would first have to define a development area, then limit the capacity of that development area, then identify contributing, and then you could essentially transfer back and forth. But step one is identifying that area.
Yes. I, I mean, I will not have a straight answer for you how we will do a TDR program outside the downtown area because of those configurations, but something that could be explored.
Thank you.
Are there questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Warren.
Would FARs qualify for what Commissioner Shoff was referring to for homeowners of private structures, being able to cash in on their property value?
You mean FAR?
Yes.
Yeah, in the downtown, yeah, the properties, usually most of the properties downtown have an FAR, not stories, depending on where they are. And we calculate the, the development capacity that they have and the unused development capacity based on their FAR. Yes. But that's, again, it's specific for the downtown area.
Other questions, comments? Okay, we do have a number of cards. I'm going to call out three names at a time. And as I call your name, you start making your way to the podium and we'll try to keep this moving. Three names, first three names, Dennis Grady, former mayor Jerry Moyo, and former Commissioner David Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I know there are important items on this evening's agenda, so I will be quick in my remarks. I've served as CEO of the Chamber of Commerce for a number of years and I currently serve as board chair at Good Samaritan Hospital. In two thousand and nine, when the city established the two current districts in the item before you now, the city intended for this area to become a vibrant neighborhood. That has not happened. The city staff reports that almost forty percent of the area, under consideration, is vacant and many structures are boarded up today. Ten years later, we can look and see how the downtown master plan, through improvements made by this and prior commissions, has resulted in a great deal of economic investment and opportunity. The lack of development in the item before you this evening has negatively impacted one of the city's largest employers, Good Samaritan Hospital. The hospital is located within a very short walking distance of the area under discussion and has approximately one thousand employees and has been serving the city and community for over a hundred years. The amenities this project will bring forward will allow employees that currently exist at Good Samaritan Hospital and those who will anticipate recruiting in the future to have the opportunity to live close to where they work. A item that all of us emphasize and we hear from people all the time. Our medical hub deserves better and deserves the opportunity to be connected to the businesses downtown and this proposed changes before you this evening. downtown, and this proposed changes before you this evening will make that possible. I urge you to adopt the staff recommendations before you. Both DAC and the planning board approve by seven oh to vote, and I hope you will do so also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Moyo.
Good evening, Mayor, city commissioners. It's great to see you all again. I'm here, of course, to support, voice my support for this project. I think it is an amazing opportunity for our city to develop an area that has, really has, I think I read, thirty-five percent of the properties are either boarded or vacant. To be able to connect downtown with Northwood, which is something we have been hoping to do for a very long time. I was on the commission in 2009 when we established Brawlsford Park and the industrial chic area, hoping that those areas would be developed, and it hasn't happened. I particularly like this for a couple of reasons. One is that city staff and NDT developers and the others have worked together to bring this forward, and I think it's a great collaborative and cooperative project. I also, one, I think I mentioned last time I was here that NDT has graciously provided space for the West Palm Beach Center for Arts and Technology to launch our program, and we're looking to do that sometime toward the middle to end of January. And it is a wonderful opportunity for this area to see some revitalization. So I urge you to support these proposed amendments. I think it's a great project. I think it's a great opportunity for our city, and I know that it'll just add to all of the other amazing things that have been happening. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you very much. David Smith.
David Smith, Gregory Road, South End. This has been a long time coming, but it's a long time coming because maybe parts of the city weren't ready for it. They weren't ready for youth leadership instead of old white guy leadership. I am more than excited about this because I see it as the movement toward the north end that's been solely neglected for about fifty-some years since the ninety-five and the turnpike came about. Nobody's fault, everybody's fault. There's things that need to be done, things that should have been done. Pleasant City should have never been neglected. None of these things should have been neglected all these years. But we finally got a development team in here, and development is not a bad word unless it's a bad project. But the development team is youthful, and I like that. And it's coming from an older guy. I want that to keep going. I want you all to approve of this, this younger commission, and keep this, keep this going because it's a long time coming. And, boys, the center of the city and the north-south axis is finally getting the attention that the east-west axis has gotten all these years. Let's keep it moving. I support this. I hope you do, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna read off three more names. If you start making your way to the podium, Bill Nugent, William Holland, Joseph Russo.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Bill Nugent, Florida Avenue, Grandview Heights. I think this is really, a really exciting time to be in West Palm Beach. We saw in the recent passage of the changes in the Seamud District, the city staff and private interests work really closely together to come up with some creative ways to move an aspect of the north end of our city forward. And I really think that that's what we see here. This really builds a bridge between our downtown and its economic energy and the north end of our city. It has the really great aspect to it that it preserves the existing character of the historic homes and building in the Nora district, in the Railroad Avenue area. What we've had in place for, I don't know how many years now, but a long time, clearly is not working. This is smart, it's forward-thinking, let's do what's right, and let's let all of our city finally benefit from the latest real estate economic boom instead of letting parts of the north end of our city miss out once again. I really hope you'll pass this. Please support it.
Thank you very much. William Holland here. Okay, he supports it. Mr. Russo.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, Joseph Russo, six ten Klamatis Street, downtown. I did not intend to be here this evening, but when I became aware that Nora was up for votes, I had to join because this has been one of my favorite projects to follow in the city. I've been a downtown resident for just over three years and been following very closely all the ins and outs of the city for much longer than that, and this is still, perhaps, today, one of my favorite projects. Not only is it innovative and next-generational, and literally, people are reaching out to me from outside of Florida asking about it, but it also is a project that was done in tandem with the city, with the staff and business leadership, and that is very special. It's projects like this that are really gonna drive West Palm Beach forward into being more of a world-class city. And I am absolutely loving the fact that I can share this with people outside of our community to show them just what West Palm Beach is going to become. So I'm gladly supportive of this and hope you will be as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Three more names, B. Jonathan Durr, Steve Simpson, and Sylvia Sharps. Mr. Durr.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Again, my name is Jonathan Durr. I am a local downtown resident off of Fern Street and a local real estate professional here in West Palm and Palm Beach. Last time I was up here and I spoke to you about our dire need for more residential housing, both for rent and for purchase. That need has only gotten greater since sixty days ago when I stood up here, a little bit less than that. It was refreshing to see Mr. First's presentation today with not just talking about the housing that they're doing, but the workforce housing. Our city is driven by hospitality, by restaurants, by hotels, and I can tell you that the local bartenders, the waitstaff, the cooks, the chefs, they all need places to live, and they needed to be around, you know, the establishments that they work at. So it was great to see what Mr. First and his team are doing at Nora for that. The other refreshing piece in that presentation was the preservation that they are looking to continue, to keep the character and the charm of that Northwood area there, I think, is also very special. So again, I just wanna say that I am in complete and utter support of the Nora project for many reasons, and more so as a resident here in West Palm Beach. It's exciting to see new development going on, and it's exciting to see it not just within this central downtown area, but to see our big, little city sort of grow further and expand because it's much needed. So again, I'm in full support of the Nora project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Simpson.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners. I was here last, the last meeting, and I spoke in favor of this project. I played off of Mayor Moyo, couldn't say it was a no-brainer, and I did say it was a no-brainer. So I don't wanna harp on that. This time Wednesday night, I'll own multiple properties on Tenth Street in the lake block there, Providencia Park, and I couldn't be more elated, the neighbors around me, everybody. We just see it as the biggest thing, the biggest news for a long, long time, since I've been here. And the Northwood area, I know what's happening there, and I hope you take the same attitude when these projects come your way for that same area, you know, the former Scuba Club. I mean, all this is such great news. I own a property on North Flagler Drive on the water. I'm gonna be building a 10,000-square-foot spec home there. Obviously, I need to see all this progress come in our direction. I have other properties in that area that, you know, I'm betting on you guys basically agreeing that this all needs to happen and let's get it going. So it's great that these developers are here. I think these guys are doing a great job, and I support it 1,000 percent. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sylvia Sharps.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, city administrator. My name is Sylvia Sharps. I have two businesses, four, one, North Rosemary. I'm speaking to encourage the commission to approve the amendments and to allow the NOR project to move forward. There's a plethora of projects being developed throughout West Palm Beach at this time, and I can personally say with the utmost confidence that I believe that the NOR project will be a major step in creating linkages for the communities, not only near the project, but that will take place throughout the city. Linkages. Linkages are imperative for the city to continue to grow, not just for us, because we're not gonna be here always, but for the children that I work with. They need to see that growth and be able to experience it. The northeast, downtown, northwest, and financial district will all be affected by positive development, and I see this as being just that. It takes all members of a community and adjacent communities to work together to make things work. Joe and Ned and that group has not hesitated to reach out to the people in these neighborhoods, and I thank them for having the wisdom and the vision to wanna make a difference in the city of West Palm Beach.
Thank you. Three more names, Steve Harznett, Leon Reed, and Deborah Powell. I'll see Deborah Powell for now. Okay. Steve Harznett?
Good evening, Mayor Keith James.
Hold on, are you Steve Harznett?
No, Leon Reed.
Okay. He didn't wanna comment. He just wanted to reviver the record.
Okay. He does not wish to speak. Complete support for Nora is expressed at first reading. He supports the project. Okay, Mr. Reed?
Good evening, Mayor Keith James and all the Commissioners. My name is Leon Reed. I live in four thirty-three Eleventh Street, and I just wanna say that I oppose on this project because I think it's a nice neighborhood, and what it's gonna cause, a whole lot of traffic and a whole lot of chaotic, and it's not gonna be right for the resident that's lived there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deborah Powell.
Good evening, Deborah Powell Skinner. I oppose the project due to the fact that I have families that have lived there for many, many years. So at this present time, I do oppose the project. Thank you.
Okay, three other names, Jennifer Reed, Terry Booty, and Cheryl Mater. Jennifer Reed.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Reed. I live at four thirty-three Eleventh Street in West Palm Beach. My family is directly impacted by this project, and I just thought about the traffic study. Did they do any studies with the traffic, with the environment? And I can speak about the neighborhood because I live there, and I know everything about it. And I just wanna say this, when people lack jobs and opportunity and ownership of property, they have little or no stake in their community. I have stake in my community, and it may not be perfect, but it's still my community. And so I want you guys to know, and I vote, I want you to vote, no, I oppose on this project. Thank you.
Terry Booty.
Good evening, leadership. My name is Terry Booty. I live at seven oh one South Olive. Not only am I a resident of West Palm Beach, but I'm also a contemporary of Ned and NTD. I am standing here in favor of the project for two specific reasons. As you know, in this day and age, we talk about DEI, right? So diversity, inclusion, but more importantly, we talk about legacy. And so as you think about how this project progresses, they have made a commitment not only to include people of color, but also to look out for the voiceless. And so my organization works very closely with the ex-offender population, teaching them how to be a part of the construction industry, how to matriculate, how to matriculate through that process. And so when you have this, this level of development, you create opportunities and job opportunities, but you do it in a way that is comprehensive for people that are typically marginalized and left out. And because of their youth, because of their complete understanding of historic norms, they have made a commitment to be an inclusive project. And for us, that is extremely important. So I ask you guys today to fully support it and allow this project to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Mater.
My name is Cheryl Mater, and I'm a local artist here in this area. And I am just so excited to have Nora come here to this area. It is so important for our community and so important for the arts. The arts are for everyone, of all different ages, young and old, and I just think how important it would be to have Nora come here, and I would be so excited, and thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Three more names, Susan Stecknich, Will Davis, and Thomas Boyton. Susan Stecknich.
Hi, good evening. My name is Susan Steckney. I live at four eleven Eighth Street. I also own four seventeen, four nineteen, four twenty-three, and four twenty-five Eighth Street, which are apartments, houses and apartments. And I can tell you that everyone on both sides of Eighth Street, in addition to my properties, are so excited about this. I've lived there for 21 years, and development has passed us by. It's been all around us, but has not come to Brawlsford Park. So this is an opportunity to have it done in a comprehensive way that's well-thought-out and takes in consideration the different economic levels in terms of providing housing. There's been some talk about Brawlsford Park and references to Pleasant City or to Northwest. And those, those communities are wonderful, and they are having new development in them because I drive past there all the time, and I see all the new construction that's going on. So this is our chance. Brawlsford Park, which is part of downtown, it's in the downtown comprehensive plan, so it just needs to really be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Will Davis.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and Happy New Year. Just want to, that I'm also support, not only as a resident in the north end, but also as a business owner in Northwood Village, this is also gonna give those residents the opportunity to see their neighborhood for what it is. You know, all the empty parcels, we can relate seeing them in the village, seeing, they've been there for far too long. Same thing with this, in this district. So let's give them the opportunity that they well deserve as a resident here in West Palm Beach. So thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Boyton.
Good evening, city Commissioners. Thank you for listening to us today. Speaking on behalf of the NOR project and very supportive of it, my family has been investing in Brawlsford Park since the late, the early nineties. We have five lots, nineteen units there. And one of the things that if you were to ask me five years ago, where's Brawlsford Park gonna go, I wasn't sure. We've seen the development over the last thirty years that we've been in West Palm, here to the city. We've seen the development to Northwood, but Brawlsford Park with so much vacant land, we didn't know where it was gonna go. So to see NDT to come with a comprehensive plan, a plan where it's one developer, so it's not a bunch of different interests all trying to figure out what's gonna work there, and then working so well with the city, I think that it's a project that is very well worth your support. I think it's gonna revitalize not only Brawlsford Park, but it'll help all the neighborhoods around it as well. That's one of the biggest things that we have. A lot of our tenants, they come, they want to live, and they wanna walk in the same neighborhood. This is providing another area in the downtown area that people, that as they walk through our neighborhood or walk around, they're gonna feel safe and secure. So I'm very supportive of it. I wanted to say there, thank you to Anna Maria. She's been very, working with us and making sure we understood exactly what's gonna happen as the project's developed, as well as NDT. They've been very forthright right from the beginning of what they're gonna do and how they're gonna develop the project. So as business owners in the community, we're very supportive of it. Thank you.
Before you leave the dais, could you state your name for the record, please?
Tomas Boyton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three other names. Three other names. Lydian Weathersby, Eusibius Williams, and Rebecca Miller. Lydian Weathersby.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lydian Weathersby, and I am a product of that area, Betfair and Franklin Park. My sister Jennifer was up here, and that's my baby sister. I oppose the project. Everyone's saying everything, and get my thoughts together here. It's so sad. We can sell our souls for anything, but we ought to be very careful. And I mentioned this once before. And I, I look at something and it says, we've been working the city and developing, working on this project for two years. And as I look at this document, it shows the community input, September 16, 2020. One, one time in 20, and so many, I guess eight in 21. So how are you letting the public know about everything? I might not be the smartest person in the bunch, but I'm not the dumbest person in the bunch. And then the master plan, how can we change this? No one talked about it in the beginning, and everything was finding out, everything out. And then I asked you, I came up here and I said, people, stop harassing my family and bullying my family and saying, you're going to be boxed in, you're going to do this and that. Stop it. Every day I'm praying, telling God, come on, God, I know you know, we may be one or two that still hanging in there, but we're going to hang on in there. And I asked you, some of the people, someone mentioned about the black neighborhood was, wasn't there, and the city said that, no, it wasn't. It was white. And was, my family was the second person that came to live in that neighborhood. If you want to do the history, really do the history. After we moved in, more blacks came, moved in, and the whites moved out. Follow the history. And I said a while back about property, city, if you really wanted to do something, and previous mayors and what have you, you could have made a difference for the people in the neighborhood, but we had to fight like hell. And we did what we needed to do. And I'm proud of my family. I'm so proud of us. We stood in there and we fought. The day we moved over there, we still had to fight. And integrity, people find your integrity because something's wrong. And when they said disclosure and disclaimers, people better realize what they're doing because everyone is in bed, they say, if your hand's in the cookie jar, my hand's in the cookie jar, who's telling on who? Who's in the bed with who is not telling? And it's coming, it's coming, the wrath is coming. And that's what I wanted to say. And then said, good Sam, you had housing many years ago on the corner of Olive and Palm Beach Lakes. It didn't work out. Now you have like a, a medical center there. You have all that property on the north side. What are you doing with that? And you said affordable. Compare some other affordable housing that some other developers said they did and they didn't. And stop coming to my church asking for stuff. This is ridiculous. You know what? I'm not afraid of anybody, and I'm not going to be feared or anything. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Eusibius Williams? Eusibius Williams is in support of the project. Don't see him yet. Rebecca Miller? Okay, in support. Nora is a fantastic project that will act as an arrow forward in leading the renewal of the north end of US-1. Okay? Three other names. Let me read four, because it's the last four cards. Dale Hedrick, Pam Reedus, Joseph Marino, and Tanya Rich. Mr. Hedrick?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Dale Hedrick. I live in West Palm Beach. I was born in Good Samaritan Hospital a few years ago. I grew up working in high school in that neighborhood that we talk about, getting paid $1.50 an hour repairing houses from Banyan, 25th Street, US-1, to Tamrin. I know the area very well, and this is a great project. I have been, my firm has been retained to start looking at renovating some of the existing buildings. And our firm has an incredible track record of, not only do we have diverse people in our company, but we also bring forth, and we've done work with the city and always exceeded all of the requirements for MWBE and other minority programs. We are actively involved currently with Excel Mentoring and some other mentoring projects, ACE Mentoring, Excel, and a few other mentoring programs. We're actively doing workforce housing. We have five lots. We're participating with the city on two of those. And we're, we're excited about this project. And, you know, everything that I've seen, it's, it's, it's needed. It's, they're going to make these buildings very energy efficient, and they're not right now. And it's just going to be a real plus for the entire neighborhood. I, I was raised here, and to see this caliber of development that really is sensitive to the needs of the community, as well as taking something and making it much, much better, is exciting for me. And I don't know anybody that's not excited about it. So I hope the commissioner, commissions, the commission will approve this request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pam Reedus?
Good evening, all. My name is Pam Reedus, and I reside at 1212 Madera Court. I am fifth generation of a home that is at the core of the bridge that we all talk about. I am in support of the program, of the development. I'm ready for a change to come to this area. It's way overdue, and I'd like to see a beautiful area be beautified in other ways. And I want to thank you. And I'm, I'm, I'm in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Marino?
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Joseph Marino. I was born in the 80s, and I graduated from Palm Beach Clinic University in 2009. I watched the city rise in the early 2000s as it then took an unprecedented turn in 2009 to unkept promises and shelled buildings. It is now 2022. I live at 233 8th Street, one of the few designated historic homes in this, in this gorgeous gem of a neighborhood. It was built in 1925. This neighborhood has not changed whatsoever since I was a child in the 80s, a college student in the 2000s, and now a homeowner today in 2022, before the promise of this project. Let me be very clear, I fully support this project. This is exactly what the neighborhood needs. It's young, it's vibrant. Let's move this progress north. My partner and I have actually benefited ourselves from TDRs. It's allowed us to restore our home and bring growth to our neighborhood. TDRs are an opportunity I wish more cities would take into consideration. Again, I fully support this project and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tanya Rich?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Commissioners, and good evening, Kristy Fox. I'm a longtime resident of West Palm Beach in the downtown area. I can say all my life. I am here to support this Nora project. I do believe it is for the betterment of my community. More people living, working, and spending their time and money here is great for our community and for our city tax base, so I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Two more cards. Mamie Kistner and Darren Studstill?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for your public service. My name is Mamie Kistner, and as you know, I wear a lot of hats in the community, been in the community for 29 years. While many people are speaking about the community, we have invested in the northwest and the surrounding district with 53 single-family homes a long time ago, and a $5.5 million community center that now is, has a health clinic. I am not opposed to change. You have never seen me, in the 29 years, oppose a project. What I am opposed to is how these developers have approached our community. It's not just that area that's going to be affected. The whole surrounding area, which includes Pleasant City, as well as the Northwest District, will be affected, will be affected with traffic. We need jobs. Affordable housing is not going to be $200,000 and $300,000 for the people in that community. When you hear people talk about how they're giving jobs and they're going to project jobs, well, we need to see it. We need to see it and the commitment upfront. It's great to talk about it. It's great to say what you're going to promise, but we get left out in the African-American community. So again, I'm not against change, but the approach, the voters will remember the approach of these developers. It has not been transparent, and we are not happy with it. Thank you.
Darren Studstill?
Darren Studstill, 401 North Rosemary Avenue, West Palm Beach, the historic northwest. I just want to take, take time to thank everybody for your, for your service. And I just want to say, I understand when you have to stretch, the uncomfortable in the stretching, but there's also benefits in those stretching. I am a part of the outreach, outreach team. It's the first, my family's been on fourth and, I mean, third in Rosemary for 50 years. My business has been there, I think, for the last 12 to 15. It's the first time in my history I've had people usually come in my door, African-Americans, people, minorities, come in there and complain about situations, different situations. This is the first time I've seen people come in there, and they talk about opportunities, creating companies, starting businesses. And that's the, that's the most important thing I think I can, we can do as a city. Give people the opportunity. Since the football game is tonight, I'm going to talk real quick. I believe if, I believe, I believe that for Georgia to win, they have to take the top off Alabama's offense. So for the midterm, for the mid-range, and the ground game can be successful. They need some space. I believe the same in West Palm Beach. We have to take the top off West Palm Beach so the mid-range and the ground businesses can have some space. The Solitos, the City Sides, the Blue Mountain Coffees, we need some space to be successful. To be a good coach, you have to make adjustments. You guys are our coaches. They're uncomfortable. You have to make those coaches so we can win. In my neighborhood, for the last 10 years, the defense has been stuffing us. I need you guys to take, to take the top so we can win. You'll be surprised, and I'm excited and I'm passionate because people are coming in my office and, and giving me things that I never thought of. And they're, they're talking about sustaining, and where can they go in the northwest because they see opportunities? That's exciting for me, exciting for me. I hope, I pray to God that God makes everybody whole in this situation. But I spent my time for the last 10 years hoping that this city will grow for collectively we can achieve. I'm passionate about that, but it's all about the doing. Coaches, you got to make the decision, and we got to keep going right now. Let's go Georgia.
Thank you very much. Is there anything in the portal, Madam Clerk?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
From Louise, Louise Stoney, 521 35th Street, West Palm Beach. Thank you for your leadership on this important investment in the north end. It enables growth through planned development that respects the views of local residents and make needed improvements to the neighborhood infrastructure.
Okay. No more cards, nothing else in the portal. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioner Schof?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had some questions for the applicant if they could kind of clarify some things. I know tonight we're, we're not talking about a project specifically, but we are talking about laying the groundwork for a project. We had a number of residents come up and, and talk about some of the concerns that they had in the neighborhood. Could you just clarify for us from a development, if it's okay with you, Mayor, from the developer's perspective? How many, how many properties do you have that are vacant? How many people are being asked to vacate property? Can you just talk a little bit about the structure? We talked about rehabbing properties. Can you talk about the rehab versus teardown versus how everything will work in the mechanics of it?
Yes. Let me just try to actually make this even better. Sorry? Forty? Okay, we've got a long way to go. Okay, we're almost here. Okay, perfect. Sorry. So this is the neighborhood that we're talking about. As you can see, the gray area, which is north of 10th Street, between 10th and Palm Beach Lakes, all of the gray properties are properties that we, that we own and control. The single bit of opposition that you heard from residents in the neighborhood all stems from one singular property, that's not from multiple properties. So within the gray area that you see, there are 51 parcels of land. We own 50 of them. There are 38 of them that are vacant. There are, I believe, eight of them that have abandoned structures on them. And then the remainder have a series of single-family homes. Two of those single-family homes were here tonight. One was, is Pam Reedus, who's one of our biggest supporters. And then the other one is the Reed family that you heard from related to parcel 133, 433 11th Street. So in this entire area of 150 unique folios, of which, again, we control about 78 of those, to date, through a lot of outreach, a lot of conversation, there's been singularly one individual household that's not been in support of the project.
So just to clarify there, though, those single-family households that you talked about, those are privately owned parcels? Those parcels are not being raised as part of any project that you have going on? Those single-family homes will remain as they are, correct?
Yeah. And as, as we've discussed, I mean, the, the beauty of what this plan is, and nothing is perfect. This is as close to perfect as I think I could ever be a part of. But all the single-family homes that exist in the core of the neighborhood between 10th Street and 8th Street, the zoning doesn't change at all for those homes. It actually creates economic incentive for the TDR transfers that wouldn't have otherwise existed. So not only is this an opportunity to create what I think will be the most dynamic Main Street kind of vibrancy center within the downtown, this is also an opportunity for homeowners that are here to create economic incentive by selling their unused air rights, which is the conversation that, of course, you were leading earlier.
Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions, comments? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 4985-21, amending the DMP zoning atlas to create the Nora District. This motion is based upon the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in section 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4985-21. An order of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amend the downtown zoning atlas to create the North Railroad Avenue Nora District and Sub-District, generally located between Quadro Boulevard, North Dixie Highway, Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, and the FEC Railroad, rezoning certain properties as Nora 2 and Nora 5, rezoning two properties as urban open space, and specifying the street classification within the Nora District. Declaring these proposed zoning map amendments to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a conflict clause and solubility clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Fox?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 4986-21, amending the DMP urban regulations to include the necessary regulations for the new Nora District. This motion is based upon the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in section 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4986-21. An order of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amend the code of ordinances at chapter 94, zoning and land development regulations, article 4, downtown master plan urban regulations, to provide regulations for the North Railroad Avenue District and the Brelsford Park District, specifically amending the following sections, figures, and tables. Section 94-102, organization of the urban regulations. Section 94-105, use requirements. Table 4-2, permitted use table for DMP. Table 4-3, permitted use table for DMP. Section 94-109, definitions and minimum requirements. Table 4-6, open space types for sub-district. Section 94-111, parking and loading requirements. Table 4-9, parking requirements. Table 4-11, curb cuts and passenger loading and dropout standards. Section 94-121, special district planning area. Section 94-124, North Railroad Avenue District. Section 94-124, North Redwood Avenue District. Table 4-28, building requirements. NORAH 5. Table 4-29, building requirements. NORAH 2. Section 94-125. Lofton District, LD. Section 94-127. Bresford Park District, BPD. Table 4-34. Building requirements, BPD-5. Table 4-35. Building requirements, BPDR. Section 94-131. Incentive programs, general section 94-132, transfer of development rights program. Section 94-133, special district incentives. Figure 4-35, TDR ascending and receiving sites. Section 94-135, Oquatchobee Business District, OBD. Section 94-273, extra requirements for special uses or permitted uses, and any other sections within Article 4 Downtown Master Plan Urban Regulations necessary to the North Redwood Avenue District, providing conflict clause or codification clause and solubility clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 4987-21 regarding rezoning from a multifamily high-density MF32 residential designation to residential planned development, RPD, including an acreage waiver to create the approximately 3.4-acre Flagler Towers RPD located at 1315 South Flagler Drive, and public hearing of resolution number 310-21 regarding the establishment of the development regulations, including the site development plans and waivers, for the Flagler Towers RPD, which will consist of 109 residential units and approximately 3,878 square feet of food service use in a building containing 2, 352 feet and 3 inches tall towers.
Good evening. For the record, Eric Snyder, Principal Planner, and I'll be real quick. The only thing that has changed from first reading, which you saw, was I'd mentioned in Resolution 310-21, Development Regulation Number 21. It had been reworked after the City Attorney's Office took a look at it to state what is on the board now, and that's just to make sure that was consistent with Section 90-7A of the City Code. So, I'm not going to read this. It just has to deal with the infrastructure hookups, and that's the only thing that's changed. Are there any questions of staff at this time?
Any questions for staff at this time? All right, is the applicant making any type of presentation?
How do you make it full screen? It's not full screen? Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission. For the record, Harvey Oyer. I have the honor and pleasure of representing the developer of what I think is one of the most exciting projects in the history of our city, certainly one of the most exciting ones I've ever been associated with. We were before you one month ago on December 13th for the first reading of a rezoning from MF32 to RPD. As part of that presentation, we made a full-blown presentation of the site plan, the architecture, the landscape, and 12 waivers. Tonight is the one and only reading of those. I would like to, by reference, include all of the testimony and presentation that we presented on December 13th this evening. I'm doing that in an effort to expedite tonight's process. As you know, it's quite a large, complex project, and we have a lot of evidence to enter into the record. The applicant's entire professional team is here again this evening. We presented in great detail on December 13th, as did your staff. You reviewed the site plan, the architectural design, the landscape, and the waivers, and after weighing all of the evidence presented, the application, the justification statements, the staff report, the testimony presented, and the planning board's unanimous approval of the project, this commission voted unanimously in favor of the rezoning based upon that full presentation. I do not want to subject everyone to another full presentation, however, given that this is the one and only reading officially of the site plan and the waivers, while I want to incorporate all of the testimony, staff report, and application from previously, I feel the need, given the letters that have been sent to the city, that we give some sort of presentation, even though the custom is, as you know, on a second reading, if nothing has changed, we wouldn't normally do that. So, let me begin by introducing Rob Frisbee, who is one of the principals of the developer. Rob?
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you all for your time tonight. As Harvey mentioned, we're going to efficiently go through our presentation, and this will be our third time presenting on this project after unanimous support from planning board and from our first presentation at this commission last month. My name is Rob Frisbee with the Frisbee Group, and I'm here with members of my family, my colleagues, our incredible design team, and our partners Heinz, one of the most awarded and well-regarded developers in the world. We are here again to share a reimagination of two former Palm Beach Atlantic University dormitories, which are located on the waterfront along South Flagler Drive, representing one of the last and most valuable waterfront sites in this part of town, and which currently isn't on our tax roll. Due to a commitment to placemaking, innovation, and outward thinking, we have assembled a world-class design team to help us rethink vertical development in our city, namely, instead of following the standard tower-on-a-plinth scheme where the vertical elements are the main focus, we have decided to prioritize the human scale and the ground plane, and to create a three-level podium that engages the public realm with townhomes, public plazas, a cafe, and which transitions into the vertical components of the design. We are honored to work with Robert Amster, an architect on this project, more generally known as Ramsa. Ramsa is famous for designing buildings that improve neighborhoods with iconic architecture that is more walkable and comfortable at the street level. Ramsa is also a leader in furthering a sense of place and community through their extensive knowledge and experience designing leading cultural, academic, and residential buildings. And that insight into academia led their economist founder, Robert Stern, who was the dean of the Yale School of Architecture for over two decades, has played an integral part in the reimagination of Flagler Towers, where we share unique proximity to several cultural institutions, including Palm Beach Atlantic University. Ramsa is also very successful at creating value in communities. 15 Central Park West is a great example of a Ramsa building in New York City that brought tremendous value to its neighborhood by elevating prices on the Upper West Side, and for the first time, they were equal or greater than prices on the Upper East Side. And we think those same value drivers inherent in the timeless Ramsa design will translate to our neighboring properties here in West Palm Beach. To better illustrate that, we have consulted with Peter Bazelli from Weitzman Associates. Peter is an independent expert and has spent his career studying impacts of developments within communities, and I'd like to ask Peter to now briefly share with you his analysis on the Flagler Towers design.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight. I am an independent expert on these matters. I've spent the last 23 years analyzing the marketability of real estate throughout North America, including many, many projects in South Florida and in Palm Beach County, and I was engaged independently to review Flagler Towers and the likely impacts that that development will have on neighboring properties. My strong conclusion is that Flagler Towers will likely cause the sale prices of property in the immediate vicinity to increase. I've worked on seven Robert Stern-designed developments in five different states and observed the same situation resulting from all of those developments, which is that they have a strong component of placemaking to them that sets a tone for the way that development can happen in a community, even in the highest-priced communities and the most suburban or rural communities. I've worked on Robert Stern-designed projects in all of them, and in fact, I've worked on projects that are designed by other designers, but Robert Stern is singularly capable of imbuing this sense of quality and design into the projects that their firm designs, and it's completely unique in the real estate development world. It's a signature of quality, and when a developer commits to hiring Robert Stern to design a project, they're committing to spend a certain amount of money, committing to a level of quality that the market also recognizes, which is the reason that Robert Stern projects typically are able to achieve very high price points and establish new marketable price points in their respective neighborhoods and submarkets, and I would expect the same to happen here. What this means is that all of West Palm Beach, but especially the properties that surround this development site, will be the focus for developers, for investors, for other entrepreneurs that are looking to start a business here, and specifically the properties that are adjoining this development site and in the immediate vicinity are likely to enjoy significant price increases as a result. And that goes for development sites. It goes for commercial property that will recognize the potential for the affluence and the investment that's happening in this particular location, as well as individual, you know, residential homeowners. I have presented an analysis and a more in-depth opinion that was submitted to you last week, and you should all have a copy of it. It's been entered into the record. But again, this analysis includes several case studies, examples, and a more thorough discussion of my opinions on this matter, but overall, the Flagler Towers project, in my strong opinion, is going to strongly influence the positive growth of sale prices in the immediate vicinity of this property, which is great for the West Palm Beach tax base, and in my view, great for the community. Thank you.
I want to take a moment to just touch on our community outreach and focus on early engagement, where we made sure that we were informing our neighbors at every step of the design process. We've had over 27 presentations to over 150 attendees, and we've received over 100 letters of support, including 100% of the institutional property owners within a 500-foot notice boundary. Our citywide outreach program included speaking directly with just under 1,500 individuals across the city. Of those we connected with, 76% who made a decision about the project supported it, and 24% asked for follow-up communication. Historically speaking, this represents overwhelming support for such a meaningful project. Additionally, we've had extensive communication with our northern neighbor, a to-be-developed project called Forte, being developed by Two Roads. Over the last five months, we've engaged with Forte to explain to them and share with them our thoughtful design process, to ensure they understand that every step of the way, we've been making certain that we aren't just creating one successful project, but that our design is elevating the values for their building and for our neighbors. Our immediate neighbor outreach and support includes Palm Beach Atlantic University, Family Church, the Norton Museum, Memorial Presbyterian Church, LaClara, Norton Park Place, the Lake Worth Pioneers Association, and residents of the Bristol and Trenan, all of which are supporters of our project, and as you can see, they do a great job of insulating our project. We've also had incredible collaboration with city staff and want to thank city staff for helping us to address constructive comments over the last five months. And lastly, we want to highlight the unanimous planning board approval we received in October, and this slide highlights several quotes from the planning board members recognizing the thoughtfulness of our design and community-minded process. And with that, I'd like to introduce Sarge Gardner from the Ramsa team to give a brief refresher of our design process.
Thanks, Rob. My name is Sarge Gardner. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm a partner with Robert Amster, and I'm working on the design of the Flagler Towers In West Palm Beach, a line of towers forms an esplanade along the inner coastal waterway. In our neighborhood, the line defines the waterfront edge of West Palm Beach, south of the bridge, which will be punctuated by Flagler Towers. The project is located at the intersection of two important open-space systems, South Flagler Drive and Norton Gallery Park. This is an ideal location for vertical growth for West Palm Beach. The existing site conditions today are incongruous with solid urban planning principles, dominated by curb cuts, asphalt parking, and a lack of pedestrian access that detracts from the adjacent community. Here are images of that landscape today. Some thoughts about our design evolution on the project. After careful consideration of the existing site conditions and the context of the surrounding neighborhood, we worked diligently to formulate a design that actualizes the allowable density on this site. Initially, we were inclined to push density close to the water. As our design thinking evolved, we pulled the design back and oriented a curved design to the southeast. Here, we took that step one step further. Finally, in option D, we actually began to pull the masses of the building apart, acknowledging the turn between South Flagler and Norton Gallery Park. And here is a summary of the evolution of those design schemes. Ultimately, we culminated in a two-tower scheme that reallocated the massing into two elegant forms. The balanced tower placement separated the massing into two more approachable towers. The separation of our massing into two more slender forms maximizes light and air, as well as direct south light for our neighbors. We've located our front door on the northern boundary, a lushly landscaped drive characterized by native sea grape trees. And here's a view of that beautiful motor court on the north side. The project, we hope, is innovative in its ability to successfully prioritize the pedestrian experience in a vertical development. The continuous urbanism will improve the street-level experience and will serve to pull the waterfront promenade across Norton Gallery Park to the Norton Museum, in turn, drawing pedestrians from South Olive out towards the water. The number of curb cuts in the design on the site will be reduced from seven to four, leaving the three most important public streets, east, south, and west, uninterrupted for pedestrians. Surrounding the site is abundant landscape and the widest sidewalks in the neighborhood. We rejected the traditional tower-on-a-base scheme with its lured parking and ventilation and obvious garage space. Rather, our response is to disguise the parking and line these streets with active uses, including a park, a public plaza, a cafe, and a street of townhouses. The existing site along South Flagler Drive is autocentric with an abundance of asphalt and narrow sidewalks. Our proposed 70-foot setback gives space to a new waterfront park. The southeast corner of the podium engages South Flagler Drive, where it meets Norton Gallery Park with a series of terraces that step down to a public plaza. Pictured here, a great addition to the city. Looking along Diana Place on the south side of the site, pedestrian pathways are currently limited, and the site is dominated by parking. Our parking is hidden by three stories of townhouses and an uninterrupted layer of On South Olive Avenue to the west... On South Olive Avenue to the west, the existing sidewalks are narrow and the street largely devoid of activity. A residential entrance and outdoor seating at the proposed café activate the street level and will, together with an enormous relocated live oak tree, provide a pleasant environment at all times of the day on South Olive. The human-scale architectural elements of the base will connect the towers to the surrounding streets, while the towers rise in a series of comfortable steps, creating outdoor terraces for residents and open sightlines for the neighboring buildings, while sculptural crowns mark the building's location on the west Palm Beach skyline. The articulation of the building's facade will complement the architecture of nearby residential neighborhoods. We've looked carefully at these neighborhoods, incorporating many features: logas, pergolas, a variety of materials and textures, distinct entries, integration of landscape and architecture. The building's base features windows, bays, balconies, logas, and clearly-defined entrances, expressing the variety and delight of the residential use within. The crowns of both towers reprise the scale of the street as they mark the important location with sculptural features that are a gift to the city skyline. The result is a seamless continuity of residential urban scale from the base to the crowns, what we hope will become a modern landmark and contribute to the developing skyline of West Palm Beach. We are confident that the building will be best known for its great street fronts, which we experience on a day-to-day basis at a welcoming human scale and can serve as a way forward to this rapidly-developing neighborhood. Thank you, and over to Rob.
We thought it would be helpful to reiterate our tower placement study. So just quickly, we started exploring both towers setback at the 25-foot code requirement. As you can see here, we then studied shifting the towers back to the 70-foot staff request, and we ultimately shifted both towers as far west on the site as the site would allow, with the western tower up against the west property line setback, and the east tower abutting our motor court. Furthermore, we stepped the towers back as they rise in height, creating further sightlines for our neighbors while creating unique buildings that elegantly taper. We feel strongly that this is a design with an incredible awareness for the surrounding properties and community, and one that we are proud to acknowledge is receiving historical support from neighbors and residents throughout the city. Additionally, and in response to comments regarding our front setback off South Flagler by our northern neighbor Forte, we think it's helpful to reiterate some of the unique factors that precipitate Forte's current design and site location, which includes Forte's property being what we would call as a flag lot and not a true waterfront site. There is a blocking site immediately east of the Forte property, which forces their site to be setback further off South Flagler Drive. This is a self-inflicted hardship, as you can clearly see the building footprint can't squeeze any further east. We think it would be logical for their primary concern to be the potential for a development on the two true waterfront sites directly in front of their building. And lastly, if Forte were to purchase that blocking site, they would be able to move their property east in line with our buildings or in line with the 70-foot staff requirement, as shown in these images here. And with that, I'll hand it over to Harvey for the zoning request.
Thank you, Rob. So Mayor and Commissioner, this is the technical part of the request. We are seeking your second vote on a rezoning from MF32 to RPD, and your singular vote on the site plan approval with the request for 12 waivers. So here's where your jurisdiction arises in Section 94-207 for plan development. It's the intent of this section to encourage through incentives the use of innovative land planning and development techniques to create more desirable and attractive development in the city. These incentives include, but are not limited to, A, relaxing or waiving height, setback lot dimensions, and lot area requirements. And that is what our waivers speak to this evening, and that's where your jurisdiction to grant or deny them arises. So very quickly, I will do this quickly. We introduced and described in great detail, introduced a lot of evidence one month ago tonight on all of these, so this is simply a refresher course to get it in the record. And that, the first waiver is a reduction of the acreage, and RPD requires a minimum of 10 acres. I don't recall the last time any project in the city met that requirement. We simply do not have the land available for assemblage, particularly east of I-95. What you'll see here in the graph at the lower right-hand corner is that the Flagler Towers project has more acreage and therefore less of a waiver request than our entire peer group on South Flagler Drive. The requirements to grant this waiver are the three bold-faced bullet points, that there are particular circumstances that justify the reduction. In this case, there's no more land available for the assemblage. If there were any adjacent land, we would have acquired it, and I would assert that there's probably no 10-acre site anywhere in the eastern part of our city, certainly not in this very high-value, scarce land area part of Flagler Drive. The second is that the requirements for an RPD and the benefits to be derived from them can be derived in a lesser area, and I think that's been demonstrated through a vertical development with a pedestrian-oriented street edge, an urbanist-style development combined with a vertical tower element. And finally, that these comply with the comp plan. So what I've done is I have dropped in about a dozen sections of your comp plan. I'm certainly not going to read them to you, but I'd like them in the record, that this project design meets, exceeds, achieves. I'm now going to lump waivers two, three, four, and five together because they are all occasioned by the same condition. And that condition is the overriding design philosophy that Sarge from Ramsa told you about, and that is to create an unfettered pedestrian experience on the three sides of this project. As a reminder, our peer group on South Flagler, they all have one street edge that they need to address, South Flagler Drive. This project is in the unique situation that it has three public road rights of way that it needs to address, Flagler Drive, Diana Place, and Olive Avenue, which made it a genuine design challenge for Ramsa. And the goal is to eliminate those curb cuts, widen the sidewalks, make it safe for pedestrians, make it pedestrian-oriented in a new urbanist style, and eliminate, to the extent possible, the conflict between vehicles and human beings. So to do that, we had to cluster access points and loading zones in the northwest corner off of Curry Crescent. So when I say I'm combining the refresher course on waivers two, three, four, and five, it's because all of those occur along Curry Crescent, and all of those waivers are occasioned by this overriding design concept. So you can see that these pertain to separation of access points, buffer strip interruption, number of access points, and configuration of loading ingress and egress. Your traffic engineering staff supports this, your planning staff supports this, and the only neighbor that is affected by it, Memorial Presbyterian Church, supports it as well. So now let me lump the next two waivers together for efficiency purposes, and that's waivers six and seven. Both of these have to do with maximum wall height, and these are occasioned by several different things, one of which is a natural grade change that increases the grade on the site by seven and a half feet from Flagler Drive to Olive Avenue. A second is the current FEMA building standards, and a third is this developer and architect's desire to meet a standard of resiliency that has never been proposed in our city, so that this project can withstand the changes coming to Mother Earth over the coming century. It's also occasioned by conflicting code provisions, or I shouldn't say conflicting, but in our case, it creates a conflict, where wall heights have maximums, but the below-ground portion of the wall counts towards that maximum, and the above-ground portion has to meet a minimum height requirement for crash and safety purposes. And what that does is it creates two waiver requests that are very technical in nature for wall height exceeding what the code permits. Waiver seven identifies the second of the two, which is on the Curry Crescent side of the project. And again, I'm happy to come back to any of these, but I think you remember them well from last time. And the big waiver request, or the one that generated, I think, the most discussion, is technically a side setback waiver. We all know it as height, and that is because height in this portion of our city is denominated in side setback. You get two feet of height on your building for every one foot of side setback. If you have a gigantic property, a 100-acre property, you could build a virtually infinitely tall building. We don't have that much property, particularly in this area of town, so every project that has come before you in this zoning district has had to seek a side setback waiver. And I spent half a dozen slides or so last time, on December 13th, sort of dissecting mathematically a number of different ways that you could view our side setback waiver request, and whether that is approved height per acre, or whether that is view angles and spacing between other developments, whether that is done in raw numbers or percentage number of waivers. However you slice and dice this, the Flagler Towers project is either requesting equal to or lesser number of waivers, percentage of waivers, feet in waivers. In fact, if we were to use the average of our peer group as our guidepost, we could have been in front of you asking for a 485-foot tall project instead of a 352-foot tall project, which incidentally, I did encourage my client to do, but this is the Ramsa design. They were given a blank canvas, they were not told what the rulebook is, they were not restricted in any way. They were asked to design the very best project that they could design, and that is what is before you. I'm happy to come back and go through these with you, but we spent a great deal of time on them 30 days ago. We looked at the skyline of the city of West Palm Beach, either built or proposed, and I think that it clearly demonstrates that the scale of these buildings is in context with the scale of the waterfront skyline of our city. The next three waivers, I'm also going to lump together, and these are truly de minimis technical, you know, what I call nickel-and-dime type of waiver request, because they are all things that encroach into the public right-of-way, not at the ground level but above you. And those include balconies, awnings, and bay windows. This occurs all over our city, most commonly in the downtown, things that can lever over a public right-of-way. It has no adverse effect on the public, but it has a great beneficial effect to the design of the project because it allows a lot of articulation and movement on the building so that you don't wind up with a flat wall. So that is our waivers nine, 10, and 11. And the 12th and final waiver, folks, is landscape requirements. I won't go through all the numbers with you. The summary is that there is one tree required for every dwelling unit, so 109 dwelling units requires 109 trees, plus 35 open-space trees, and we are short of that by 26 trees, for a reason. This area that I'm moving my cursor around, which is a public open space, was requested by staff. It adds to that pedestrian experience on Flagler Drive, so we replaced what could have been planted with hardscape. But to replace that, we have gone, per staff request, your city landscape architect, Arbus, to go into Norton Gallery Park, two-and-a-half-acre piece of land owned by you that has ficus benjamina, which is either already dead or on its way to dying. It's a bit of a checkerboard. You have a live tree, a dead tree, and a live tree, and we know what the fate of the remaining ficus trees will be. So we were asked to replace those with other specimen trees, which we are doing at our cost. And when you add all that up, we far exceed the tree requirement. We also exceed it in clear trunk height, caliper, any way you want to denominate the trees. Additionally, we're required to plant 83 shrubs. We're planting 1,947 shrubs. This, too, enjoys the support of our surrounding neighbors as well as your staff. So that, ladies and gentlemen, is a quick summary of 12 waiver requests. And finally, I'd like to finish with the financial piece. I won't go through this again in detail because I think you recall this well, but this project, should it be approved and built, will be the largest taxpayer in the history of the city. And this provides, this slide provides some context to what I mean, at over $8 million a year just to the city, not to all taxing authorities, just to the city, which is a tremendous windfall to our school district, which needs it, as well as all of the other taxing districts. By comparison, you can see to the right of the shaded blue area, the next highest taxpayers in the city, the Bristol, $3 million last year, so this is more than double the Bristol. You can see it far exceeds Two-City Plaza, Phillips Point, Trump Plaza, Palm Beach Outlet Malls, which is, I believe, 70 acres, lots of traffic, City Place Office Tower, Esperante, and St. Mary's Hospital. We further broke that down into what percentage of your entire ad valorem budget that would be. It's almost 10% addition to your entire ad valorem budget. We broke that down into something that people can easily understand. How many first responders could we hire with that much money? It'd be 48 new first responders each year. We then did an interesting analysis, and that's if we were to follow your staff's height guidance of 300 feet, which no project, South Flagler Drive, has exceeded that to date. What would we be giving up revenue-wise? I think we've already demonstrated from a design standpoint that that height and bulk has been hidden, it's been broken up, it's not visible from the pedestrian or vehicular experience, so we've mitigated any adverse impact. But let me talk about the flip side of that. What would be the adverse impact to our community should you not approve it? Just that additional 52 feet of height between 300 feet and 352 feet of height is $1.8 million of ad valorem tax to you, not to all taxing authorities. Compared to Phillips Point, the Outlet Mall, City Place Office Tower, Esperante, and St. Mary's, just that top 52 feet pays more in taxes annually to the city than all of those other projects in total. I also pointed out, and I think it bears repeating, is this is not in the CRA. So most of the big projects coming to you have been in the CRA. That's fantastic for the CRA. It's not fantastic for all of you when you have to balance a budget in the rest of the city. So this $8 million a year is coming to you to be spent anywhere in this city where the need arises, and the impact is minimal. You're talking 109 units, probably some of which will be seasonal. The standards for the rezoning, the second hearing of the rezoning tonight, are found in Section 9232, I'm sorry, 94-32A of your zoning code. We meet all of these standards. I did introduce evidence in the last meeting because staff asserted that we did not meet one of these, and I introduced evidence that we did. I think staff who can speak for themselves now agree with our position, as did you, as did Planning Board, that we clearly meet all eight rezoning standards. We are proposing an RPD in a sea of RPDs. We are not proposing a uranium mine next to an elementary school. We are proposing a tall residential luxury condominium in between a whole bunch of tall luxury residential condominiums. I think staff might have been speaking to our difference on the height, but that does not in any way affect the rezoning standards. We believe we meet those, and we introduced sufficient evidence to support that, and there was no evidence proffered to the contrary. We enjoy the support of all of our surrounding neighbors, except the one that you heard from last time, including Palm Beach Atlantic University, Family Church, the Norton Museum of Art, the Ann Norton Sculpture Garden. This is a letter from related companies, actually one of our competitors in the local... This is a letter from related companies, actually one of our competitors in the luxury residential space, recognizing that the jobs that they are moving here require offerings of housing such as what is proposed tonight. Interestingly, one of our competitors down the street, LaClara, that is Great Gulf, the endorsement letter on your left, again, another competitor supporting this project. You can see the Dixie Business Association, the Lake Worth Pioneer Association, which owns a reverter interest in the adjoining two-and-a-half acres on the south side, and Memorial Presbyterian Church, our neighbor that is most affected by our waiver requests. I will not go through the MBE hiring goals again. You heard from Ben Carson Jr., who described it much more articulately than I can do. These are the same slides that you saw last time, so these are already in the record. But Fulcrum, his company, has made a large commitment in our community to growing existing MBE firms. I think their investment is about $10 million in our community for those purposes. So with that, I thank you for your patience, and I stand ready for any questions that you may have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant, Commissioners, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. Appreciate the review of all the information again. One of the many things that I like about this project is the pedestrian experience, and I really appreciate that the developer has prioritized that throughout the plans. I was just wondering if you could revisit, and I don't know if it's in one of these slides here, what will be accessible by the public along the sidewalk areas?
So this is the Flagler Drive side. All of what you see in this image is publicly accessible. You'll also notice what will be the widest sidewalk in this section of the city. Right now, the sidewalk is right on the street. We've eaten into our own property to create a large green swale area, as well as that allay of trees to create a sense of safety and shade from the vehicles, as well as a wide sidewalk. So this is a more active component. And if I can find the images, but it wraps around Diana, where there's presently no city sidewalk, so we are creating a sidewalk for the public where one does not exist. And then the sidewalk wraps around the, I don't know how that's moving without me touching it.
I think somebody's maybe doing it for you in the back?
Okay. And there, of course, is a café on the Olive Avenue side. So all of that is publicly accessible. So unlike some of our peer group, which are outstanding projects, where it is a big tower on a hill and a big gate on the sidewalk that connotates, "Don't come here," that is not the look that Frisbee Hines and Ramsa were going for. This is meant to be a three-story townhouse project, much like its Magnolia Court neighbor, a block or two away, that engages the public, puts human activity directly on the street, while masking the height of the vertical elements behind it. Did I sufficiently answer your question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Okay, we have several cards. I'm gonna call out three names and start making your way up to the podium. Dennis Grady, David Smith, Ron Warnicki.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, Dennis Grady again. First of all, thank you for your approval of the first reading of the item before you right now. That unanimous consent by you, I think, reflects hard work on the part of the developer, your staff, and the community in support of one of the greatest Class A additions to the city of West Palm Beach I've ever seen. The applicant's attorney outlined the tax value that will be given to you, a $400-million project, what it will generate in jobs, tax revenue, et cetera. Opposition exists from only one individual out of a litany of abutting property owners who have written and verbalized their support of the project. You will hear this evening from the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches and their position on it. I urge you to reinforce your original action in the month of December and unanimously pass the item before you now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Smith?
David Smith, South End. The part that I liked about this project from the very, very beginning was that evolution of design they were talking about, where they must have started with a big chunk of Play-Doh and stuck it on a flat box, and they thought that wasn't very good. And they squeezed it, and they started pulling it apart, and it looked better. And then they finally pulled it apart and stuck it in the back, and you got the design. I think there was more to it than that, but they have a computer, I only know Play-Doh. The other element that I like more than anything else, because everybody's gonna say a lot of things, a lot's been said, three words: general fund revenue. That's what I like after the design process. That's what this town needs. Thank you.
Ron Warnicki?
Ron Warnicki, West Palm Beach. I am repeating some of myself from the last meeting, but I cannot emphasize enough the fact that I was on the Neighborhood Association Board on Central Park West, when 15th Central Park West was developed. And all of the accolades and superlatives that were used this evening describing the project were at best minimal compared to what our end results will be. Please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Three more names. Donald Burgess, Nick Nicola, and T. Leon Alexander.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Donald Burgess with the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches. The list of waivers before you tonight is extensive, but not unreasonable, and the chamber is encouraging you to give them favorable consideration. Flagler Towers is a unique, exciting, and thoughtfully designed project that will provide employment opportunities, increased tax revenues, and add another 109 units to a housing market that is struggling to meet demand. While this planned development by itself will not solve the problem, the addition to our housing inventory will help to relieve some of the current pressure that we are experiencing. As a reminder, the approximately $8 million projected increase in ad valorem tax revenues will be a dramatic improvement over the current use of the site. And these revenues would go into the city's general fund, therefore being available to cover the costs of essential community services. And putting the economic benefits aside, this evening's presentation has demonstrated developers' concern for social impact with a design that features the prudent use of ground-level areas that will engage pedestrians. Commissioners, this project has strong support from the business community, and we urge you to vote to approve the waivers presented this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Nicola? He supports the project. Oh, there it is, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'm Nick Nicola, and I stand here in support of this project. I was here at the last meeting in December, so I don't need to reiterate a few things, but some things I do want to point out that I noticed last month and tonight. One is just the fine detail that these developers are putting into this project. The presentations, the planning, the urbanization, the attention to detail, I think, is very telling for how these developers are going to continue to execute on this project to the finest detail. You know, one thing about height, I know there was a little bit of a hard time given about the height of this, these buildings. It's not the tallest tower in the city, and I also believe in, you know, five, 10 years down the road, it won't be the third, fourth, or fifth tallest building. It's just the evolution of growth and innovation, and I think that this is a great project to start to push those boundaries a little bit more. Again, I stand here and support this. I think these are great developers, and I think this will be a great addition to the continued growth of West Palm Beach, especially as it expands and grows to the south. Thank you.
Thank you. Do have a couple of cards. They don't wish to speak, but they want to comment. Red Steve Harzner supports the project, complete support for Flagler Towers, as expressed at first reading. T. Leon Alexander, I am a resident less than two miles away. I support the building of Flower Tagler Towers and the opportunities for employment in businesses. Okay, three other names. Kelly Armentano, Judy Gibson, Alex Milan.
Good evening, Mayor James and City Commissioners. My name is Kelly Armentano, and I am a Palm Beach County resident. I'm here to speak in support of the Flagler Towers project proposed this evening. This project has several important benefits for our city. It will generate $8 million annual revenue and will increase property values for the surrounding neighborhoods. But I really appreciate what the development team has done to enhance the pedestrian experience and improve the nearby park. As a mother of two little girls, I am all about parks and pedestrian access, especially when it favors scooters, strollers, and tricycles. Commissioner Lambert, I am glad you asked about public access, and I love all the options this opens up for me and my little ones. The connectivity this project provides for walkers, bikers, and those who live by, live nearby is fantastic. As you can see tonight, this project has broad support. Please join me in supporting Flagler Towers. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Gibson?
Good evening, Mayor James and Commission. Thank you for being here for us, and also Happy New Year to each of you. My name is Judy Gibson, and I am a proud Palm Beach County resident for four generations now. I'm also on the advisory board for Fulcrum with Ben Carson. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Flagler Towers proposed tonight along the south Flagler Drive. Having lived, worked, and played in West Palm Beach for over 20 years now, both professionally and philanthropically, I'm here tonight in full support of the thoughtful design and of the buildings and intentions behind the public space provided and the extraordinary place-making created on this site. I really love the connectivity this project actually will bring and provide from South Flagler Drive and South Dixie and its beautiful improvements right down to the Norton Gallery Park. In addition, I am in support of the height requested. Going a mere 50 feet higher not only complements the tower's design, but of great importance is the revenues that it will generate from this additional footage incorporated into our great city of West Palm Beach. Plus, it would be a tremendous opportunity to gain an additional $8 million in taxes, which would be used throughout and with the city of West Palm Beach. This is a top-quality, extraordinary project, and the type of development that I and many, many others want to see for West Palm Beach. I strongly suggest that you all approve this proposed project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alex Milan?
Good evening. My name is Alex Millen. I'm in full support of the project. I believe it's a great project by a great development team, and it'll provide significant economic and design impact on the city, so I ask you to please support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Three other names. Scott Diamond, Arthur Martins, and Eucibius Williams.
Scott Diamond, West Palm Beach resident, owner of property and jewelry, several other businesses in the city. I fully support the project and the Frisbee Group. Fantastic, really, really unbelievable. Thank you very much, and I hope that everyone else supports it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Arthur Martins?
Good to see you, Mayor James. Thank you, Commissioners, for your leadership over these last couple of years, putting West Palm Beach on the map. I stand, Arthur Martins. I stand in favor of the project proposed by the Frisbee Group for three reasons. As a real estate broker who serves clients who would live in that building, and as an active member of the Business Development Board of Palm Beach County, we need places for those company executives and employees to live in. Secondly, in relation to the height, I think the residents will appreciate the extra projects that will come from the extra height in the project versus trying to figure out if it's 300 or 350 feet. I didn't bring that. Thirdly, I think what the Frisbee Group has done exceptionally well on is not just checking the neighborhood impact, DEI, box, but they've, in partnering with Fulcrum, they've set a new standard in development in West Palm Beach that I think will allow us to accomplish what we've been wanting to accomplish for a long time in many neighborhoods. So I stand in full support of the project and ask you to vote the same way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Eucibius Williams? Eucibius Williams. Okay, let me read the statement. He supports the project, is overall a good project that is thoughtful, done in a way to bring revenue to our city that is needed badly. Okay. Three other names. Jim Jenkins, Mamie Kizner, and Charlotte Wright.
Mayor, City Commission, I'm an elder at Memorial Presbyterian Church that sits immediately adjacent to this project. We have provided a letter, and we are in full support of the development. We see this as a continuation of West Palm Beach becoming a real city, and a city that we want to live in, worship in, and be a part of. And also, since I have a couple of seconds, just want to thank you. I'm a resident of South Florida Drive for allocating money to repay Flagler Drive 30 days ago. Greatly appreciated by our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mamie Kizner?
Good evening, Mayor and Commission, again. Thank you very much, again, for your service. I stand excited about this project. This is an example of developers who will reach across this city to tell you what they are going to do to help this community. I have spoken to these developers about local minority hiring. As you know, I was on the Bristol project as the only female and African-American on that project, which brings $3 million into this city every year. Now we're looking at $8 million coming into the city, a commitment to jobs for our local and minority community. This is an example of the developers we want in this city. They have been very transparent. Their outreach has been superior. Their presentation has been superior. I'm speaking for many in the African-American community. We embrace this. It is an exciting project. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlotte Wright?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Charlotte Wright of 2275 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. I am here as representing a proud business owner and a faith-based leader in the city. I want to see before, I see before us this opportunity of economic boom in our city so that all residents can benefit. Our ministry believes in community and creating a platform for community impact, and this project will do that. The project will generate over $8 million a year that will go to our city. Those dollars can be used to fund projects and services we need throughout West Palm Beach. That means first responders, more equipment for safety, more road improvements, and neighborhood projects. I support this project and ask that you pass this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, three more names. Actually, four, because this is the last four cards. Sharice Wilson, John Stevenson, Bryce Graham, and Darren Studstill. Sharice Wilson? Is she here? She supports the project. John Stevenson?
Evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I stand in full support of this project. I believe it will be an absolutely beautiful addition to the city. It's in an area that's frequented by walkers and joggers, as it is one of the most beautiful parts of our beautiful town, and I believe that this project truly will help elevate this city onto the world stage as it deserves. Thank you.
Bryce Graham? Bryce Graham? Doesn't check the box. I don't know where he is. Darren Studstill?
Good evening, again. My name is Darren Studstill, 401.
Good evening. Again, my name is Darren Studstill, four-one, North Rosemary. I'm trying not to use the football analogy, but, but it's the same, same topic. I fully support this, this project. Like I said before, I've been here for the last fifteen years and I can much say, West Palm Beach has always had development, but I don't know if all development had the opportunities for all. I think this project gives us the opportunity to benefit us all. Just my other hat is I work for the school district, Palm Beach County. I walk, I walk at Roosevelt. I walk kids from Australia to Tamaran Avenue every day, sometimes for avoid conflicts, sometimes just to be a friend for them. I walk through that neighborhood and always say, what is the solution? How can we make this, this better? I believe this project with the eight million dollar tax increase to our overall budget, that we have the opportunity to be deliberate and intentional on helping neighborhoods that need that help now. I totally support it and I'm excited about being a part of this outreach team. The outreach team is really doing, making adjustments on a day-in, a day-out basis to impact all our communities. So, I totally support this project.
Thank you very much. Anything on the portal? Madam Kirk?
Yes, there is, Mr. Mayor. This comment from Tara Mattem, thirty-two-hundred Summit Boulevard, Unit two-zero-five-seven-five, West Palm Beach. It is a great idea to repurpose and reuse. Patrick Painter, one-five-eight River Drive, West Palm Beach. I unfortunately cannot attend tonight's commission meeting, but I wanted to submit the comment expressing the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches in my support of the Flagler Towers project. I believe this project will greatly benefit our city and add to its continued success. Margaret Horgan, two-five-three Barcelona Road, West Palm Beach. On behalf of the Board of Trustees of the Anne Norton Sculpture Gardens, we support the proposed Flagler Towers project located on South Flagler Drive. ANSG firmly believes in the importance of placemaking in our West Palm Beach community. We have reviewed the plans and believe the architectural character will be a welcome addition to the recent new building design in West Palm Beach and is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, surrounding neighborhood. Flagler Towers will re-energize the pedestrian experience along the waterfront. ANSG appreciates the planned improvements, including new landscaping and large sidewalks for public use, and believe they will enhance connectivity to the cultural offers in our neighborhood. Please vote yes to support this project. Roger Jansen, four-hundred Clemata Street, Suite two-hundred, West Palm Beach. Just write, I support the project. Those are the only ones I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions, comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Just a, just a comment. Just wanted to say thank you to Heinz, to the Frisbee Group, to Ramsa, because it is clear the amount of work that went into this. Speaker earlier said, we're setting a new standard in West Palm Beach, and I, I do believe that we're doing that with, not only with the design, but with the community outreach, with the DEI opportunities, with the pedestrian experience, and I'm very excited to support this project tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. All right, there are no other comments. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number four-nine-eight-seven-two-one, a rezoning to change approximately three-point-four acres located generally at thirteen-fifteen South Flagler Drive from multifamily high-density residential zoning designation to residential planned development zoning designation and waiving the acreage requirement to create the Flagler Towers residential plan development. This motion is based upon the factual testimony and evidence provided, presented, the application submitted, the staff report, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with all eight rezoning standards found in Section ninety-four dash thirty-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations. The City Commission also finds that the proposed project uses innovative land planning and development techniques to create a more desirable and attractive development in the city, complies with requirements of Section ninety-four dash two-oh-seven, and that particular circumstances justify the reduction of the planned development acreage to less than ten acres and that the requirements for the planned development, district zoning, and the benefits to be derived from the planning development, district zoning can be derived in such lesser area.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion. Hearing on, Madam Kirk can read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number forty-nine-eight-seven-two-one, and also the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amended zoning map of the city of West Palm Beach by rezoning approximately three-point-four acres located generally at thirteen-fifteen South Flagler Drive from a multifamily high-density residential zoning designation to a residential planned development zoning designation with an acreage waiver to create the Flagler Towers residential plan development, providing for the establishment of development regulations by separate resolution, declaring the zoning map amendment be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, revising the zoning map of the city accordingly, providing effective date and further purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number three-ten-dash-twenty-one granting twelve waivers to the city's zoning and land development regulations, establishing development regulations for the Flagler Tower residential plan development and approving a site plan including an architectural plan, landscape plans, and civil plan referred to in the resolution. This motion is based upon the factual testimony and evidence presented, the application submitted, the staff report, the recommendations of the planning board, the findings that the proposed project uses innovative land planning and development techniques to create a more desirable and attractive development in the city, is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and complies with the standards found in Section ninety-four dash thirty-two and ninety-four dash two-oh-seven of the City of West Palm Beach Code of Ordinances.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion. Hearing on, Madam Kirk can you read the ordinance, please?
It's a resolution. This was a resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, oh, okay, good. That's even better. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Okay, motion carries unanimously since there is no opposition. All right. Bless you. Item eight-point-two. Give people a few minutes to get out. If you could leave as quietly as possible, please. All right, item eight-point-two, public hearing at first reading of ordinance number forty-nine-twenty-seven-dash-twenty-two regarding a rezoning of one-point-seven-three, plus or minus one-point-seven-three acres located forty-seven-oh-eight dash forty-seven-fourteen North Flagler Drive for multifamily high-density residential to residential plan development. Public hearing of Resolution number two-dash-twenty-two regarding the development regulations and conditions for the ALBA residences' residential plan development and the granting of waivers of the zoning and land development regulations. Mr. Schmidt?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We're here for the project this evening. Previous called Scuba, but that's been renamed ALBA, which means First Light. The developer, Kenneth Baboon, is with me tonight as well as Blue Road Development, his development partners. We have a local architect, Spino Arorke, other local team members, Rick Rikennis, Orange Dog Marketing, and as well, from the very beginning, Cooper Construction Management that will be helping us with our minimum and exceeding our minimum MBE participation with the development of this project. Got twenty-four slides for you this evening and I can get through them fairly quickly. These are the previous development projects Mr. Baboon has put together in the Miami area. There's eight residential projects, three commercial projects, and multiple hospitality projects, and we're happy for him to have chosen the city of West Palm Beach for his next project. The location is forty-seven-oh-eight through forty-seven-fourteen North Flagler Drive. It's on the east side of North Flagler Drive between forty-sixth and forty-seventh Street. It's a total one-point-seven-three acres, one-point-two-two of upland, and just a half acre in, highlighted in the blue that's in submerged lands. These are the surrounding shots of the property. It's currently vacant, vacant property gated with intercoastal to the east, single-family, multifamily to the west, a single-family lot to the north, and multifamily to the south. I want to go over what the current approval is on the property. It's still valid. It's been kept valid through the, the emergency orders by the governor, governor, and it's a five-story, twenty-eight, twenty-eight-unit multifamily building with the first level parking, four levels of residential above that, fifty-five-foot building height, and what I would say kind of uninspiring architecture. The current site plan that I've added a little color to that you can see on the screen, this approval pushed the building all the way to the street. It walled off the private and privatized the green space along the street. It has large expansive asphalt circulation and parking. It has minimal green space and only five-foot buffers around the perimeter. There's the building pushed to the edge, the private green space, and the minimal and lack of green space that the current standard code provides. We're requesting something much more visionary for the site. We're asking to rezone the property from MF thirty-two to residential plan development for fifty-five units, twenty-one stories. It's a five-story podium for our garage, sixteen floors of residential above that, about a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand square feet of building. At this point, there, our original application had a dock in it. We're not asking for a dock. There's considerable permitting that has to be done should this project proceed forward. You will probably see us asking for an amendment in the future. We originally started off asking for seven waivers and we were able to reduce those to four. It's the RPD that you've heard on multiple projects this evening, as well as projects throughout the, the city. We're asking for the height to be at two-hundred-and-forty-four feet. We're asking for credit for our submerged lands for sixteen units, and we're also asking for driveway separation. The property has very minimal frontage. The code requires a hundred-and-twenty-five feet between driveways. We've minimized those to just one in and one out, but we can't meet that separation. This is the proposed architecture. It's a twenty-one-story tower. Again, sixteen floors of residential with a five-floor podium. Our garage is internalizing vehicles, internalizing our circulation within the site, and also glare to others. We've worked considerably with the neighborhood and I'll explain that as we go, but on the street, you're seeing us have our valet and active uses directly along Flagler Drive. We pushed our building back and tiered it up. Again, you'll see it in further architecture, but our front, our front building's back and set back additional feet. We have, we've tiered it back from Flagler Drive. We've provided public green space, art in the public, and a secured pedestrian path as well as active use along there. This is a view of our sunrise deck, ALBA, which sunrise. This is a view of that. You'll see that there is a pool on the sunrise deck and a few others that we'll see later. And this is a view from our architecture from, from the higher floors looking over the intercoastal, Palm Beach, and Atlantic Ocean and the pack. Here's a rendering of our site plan with substantial green space being brought to the neighborhood along the front, our sunset deck with one pool, our sunrise pool, a terraced deck for some townhouses, and we've added one pool on the sunset, one on the sunrise, and there are two plunge pools for the, for the private residences along there. And we've centralized and brought our massing to the center of the site. So, we've done considerable setbacks and I'll, I'll show you that on the next slides. We've had considerable public outreach. I'll go through the dates later on, but with this residential plan development through neighborhood feedback, it resulted in substantial design changes that include an evolution to our current design and relocation of the building massing away from North Flagler Drive to help the North Flagler Drive corridor. It's a tiered building design with expansive front setback of twenty-six feet for active uses. And that's the twenty-six feet. Tower placement has been set back a hundred-and-twenty-seven feet to break up the massing, make sure we have a human scale along the North Flagler corridor and ensure a pedestrian experience. The front setback and podium are designed to transition, ensure resiliency affecting surrounding values and the tax base. Neighborhood green space along, along the street and along the sides of our twenty feet. We've centralized our building massing to the center. We've provided art in public places along the right-of-way. We've provided security through active use along the right-of-way. We've narrowed the driveways to one way, so it's a safer situation. We've internalized our parking and circulation. We've internalized our trash. We've provided over forty parking spaces in the garage above code to make sure that we're not parking in the neighborhood, and we've undergrounded the utilities. This is our architectural stack. What you're seeing on the left side is looking at the architecture straight on from Flagler Drive, and the right one is a cross-section. Flagler Drive being in the middle, you'll see the red line is our tiered setback to ensure that consistency with the neighborhood. The purple highlights are active use that's along that roadway. This is our five-foot, or, I'm sorry, our five stories of internalized garage, our five, or our four waterfront homes, our green space on top of the podium on Level Six. These are our pool locations, one on the sunrise, one on the sunset, and then the plunge pools on the, on the private residential areas. And then our sixteen, or additional sixteen stories. Primarily, the square footages are around the two-thousand-square-foot range. We do have up to four-thousand square feet in our private townhomes as well as on the penthouses. So, majority of them are in the two-thousand range. We do go up to four, about four-thousand for six of them. In terms of looking down through this area, in terms of cross-section, on the top slide is the Marina Village that's currently approved. The right two being developed right now at thirty stories. Ours in the center, oop, ours in the, ours in the center, being twenty-one stories. Placido de Omar to the right. On the, on the backside looking east, you've got Placido de Omar, again at twenty-six stories, us proposed at twenty-one, and all the thirty-story and twenty-five-story development in Marina Village. These are bird's-eye views from those. We feel that we're very compatible with what's going along along the corridor and fit, fit into that context. Again, the right side Marina Village is currently under develop, under development. Ours at twenty-one, Placido de Omar at twenty-five, and Palm Beach House at thirty. And this is looking west, I'm sorry, east to west. The reason for the RPD and waiver request, we have a previously plotted and very unique property. It's only a hundred-and-fifty feet of frontage and narrows to a hundred feet along the back along the waterway. As a PUD, we're encouraged through incentives and design techniques to build a more desirable, attractive development. The location of the tower lessens the impact of the community. We've put that massing towards the center, and we've chosen to have height instead of mass over the property. We've internalized our internal impacts. Height is not prohibited in the zoning district and we, the code encourages infill development. Positive impacts are residential ownership. The projects that are getting built right now are rentals. This is residential ownership, and I think that's very important for the community and buy-in for the north end. It's setting a highly elevated standard and design technique and, and design standards, innovative planning techniques, invenom and thoughtful architecture, building placement for compatibility, and internalizing our, our parking. We have active uses and twenty-four-hour security. We have additional community commitments. There's a, when we went to the neighborhood meetings, there's a channel that everybody uses along the intercoastal. We were studying whether we can get that marked, so, so the wayfinding will help. If the channel can be dredged, we will dredge it, which benefits not only us but others. They asked that they'd be able to use our CCTV monitoring if there was something that went on in the neighborhood, and we've also committed to do a wall or fence upgrade to the south side of Osprey Park. This is a one-hundred-million-dollar investment. We provided an economic study. It's over four-hundred-and-two jobs over the next four years and thirty to forty permanent jobs. The increased tax value on this will be one-point-five million dollars. PDs per Section ninety-four twenty-two-oh-seven-C residential plan developments are a minimum of ten acres. We're proposing one-point-seven-three. Section ninety-four three-oh-eight-F allows properties with submerged lands of two or more acres to apply for a PD. So, those are conflicting code sections. We asked for the waiver for the most comprehensive one, which is the minimum of ten acres. You saw multiple projects here tonight asking for that, and I've outlined other ones that have been done within the community. The Slade at fifteen-fifty-one was one-point-three acres, Villa del Lago, one-point-four, Flagler Landing, three-point-four, Aqua Vista, five-point-four, and then on the south end, two-and-a-half, one, and three acres, all with considerable heights, as well as the Curry Seamud height that was recently approved. Sorry, the standards adjustment for waivers, we meet and exceed all the amendment standards per Section ninety-four thirty-two, Items A through H, and Section ninety-four thirty-five, Items one through fourteen, as outlined in our, and submitted in our comprehensive October twenty-second, twenty-one justification statement. as outlined in our, and submitted in our comprehensive October 22nd, '21 justification statement and the city's planning department professional staff report. And as part of this record, the project compile, the project, the project complies with all the standards, staff's professional recommendation of approval, the owner's agreement with 14 conditions of approval, additional commit, community commitments that we've talked about, which is the channel marking and dredging, the funding of the wall, and the access to, to security. The community outreach started to clear back in November. We met with North, North Community, NCON, as well as Northwood Shores. We got sent back to the drawing table, spent considerable time in the beginning of the year and submitted in beginning of May. We went out to the community and showed that, what our changes were in April, worked through the summer to take care of staff comments and came back to them in fall. There was an ice cream social with food trucks for three days to reach out to the community. We did then another neighborhood meeting before the planning board, two meetings after the planning board, and we're here tonight, January 10th. We would, should we proceed forward, we would go to January through May for construction documents, a groundbreaking in the summer, and hopefully completion in spring of 2025. Here's some of the pictures of the, of the food truck event and ice cream social. You can see pictures of people checking in, showing plans, the community outreach at the bottom. But there's been considerable input as we move the project along. We've addressed the setback in building massing. We've addressed the security concerns. We've addressed parking concerns, the boat channel. We have a letter of, of approval from our directly adjacent single-family neighbor. We had over 500 people show up to the community meeting. Of those 500, 250 people were registered. Of those 250, 100, 250 people, over 200 letters of support were given to us. I'll hand those in. These are some additional neighbors' support letters. This is the mapping of where they live and their support. I got a short video. Let's see if we can hear it.
We loved it here. It was amazing.
I think it's gonna be great for the neighborhood. It's a beautiful setup.
It's a really good project, and it's gonna pick up major difference to the community.
I just want to say like, I think this is a great thing, a great development for Northwood.
I think this new development will add a ton of value to the marketplace.
Very excited about it. I'm all for it, and I can't wait for them to break ground.
I think this condominium would really, really help this area a lot.
I feel that this would be such a great addition to the neighborhood, such a beautiful location and would really be a thriving place.
I think it is just, I've seen the plans and I think it would just be an incredible asset to the neighborhood. I mean, it really needs development here.
I really love this project. I think it's gonna bring a lot of stability to our neighborhood.
I just think it's a great idea that we have Alba here to start building something to better the neighborhood.
I hope more people get involved and encourage the development of this area.
I think this is going to be a wonderful project. We've seen a lot of things that never materialized, and I think this is gonna be the one.
This neighborhood really did a good use. It's a big building, a beautiful building, like Alba.
Very excited for the Alba project because I think it's gonna bring kind of a, a new sense to this area.
Come here to this project. I support it.
We're very excited about Alba doing this project here.
I think it'll be fantastic. I look forward to this happening.
I just think it's such a good idea that we have this going on, and I can't wait to see what they have to bring to us.
I hope you, you see the good in it and approve it, and let's see this project come to fruition.
I think it's just a great thing for the neighborhood and for local business, and can't wait to see it get done.
I'm so excited about this project coming up. I'm all for it.
Bring more people to this area, so I think it's perfect.
I just wanted to give my support in this new building for Alba.
Great project. I'm very excited about it.
We look forward to getting this done.
I'm really excited about the Alba project.
We support Alba.
Yes, we do.
We definitely support the Alba project.
We support the project of Alba.
We stand for the project of Alba.
We support the project of Alba in West Palm Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Kenneth Baboon. We'd like to just say a few words. Our team is here and available for questions, and I'll leave it up to him.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mayor James. Thank you, commissioners. It's been really a pleasure to be here greeted the way we have been in your community. Up to the point that our development headquarters are moving up here. We like the fact that we can materialize areas like Northwood to be able to bring them up to a potential that Palm Beach is going through. The transformational changes that we're doing here through your leadership have been really amazing. We hope we can get this approved. We're here to stay. We're definitely here to stay. I'm already a resident up here and wanna be part of this change with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Staff, Mr. Roach, you have a presentation?
Good evening. For the record, John Roach, principal planner for the city. So I feel like the applicant went through everything very thoroughly, so I won't, I won't go through a full presentation. I'll just put on the record that staff is recommending approval of the project. That's based upon for the rezoning, which is the ordinance, Section 94-32 of the zoning land development regulations. As you know, from the previous items this evening and many others recently, with the planned development, the development conditions within the resolution will just be discussion item this evening. Those will be voted upon at second reading if this were to move forward. But even with that, we do feel like that complies with Section 94-32 as well as the site plan stand, site plan standards in 94-35. All the resolutions are contained within the, or excuse me, all the conditions are contained within the resolution. The applicant has agreed to all those, as you indicated in their presentation. I'll also put on the record that the planning board did recommend approval by a vote of six to one at their November meeting, and that did include a specific motion and vote with regards to the support and the reduction of acreage. So they were supportive of that. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But again, I feel like the applicant covered everything with regards to the project, so that concludes my presentation.
Very good. Commissioners, questions for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for the applicant, if I may. Thank you very much and thanks for the presentation. You know, I saw in your video and your list of community engagements, and I've received a lot of emails and support. Also emails from neighbors that had concerns. And so what I wanted to understand from you as the development team is, what adjustments did you make to this design in response to neighborhood feedback? And I'll have a part two to that question of kind of where we go from here, but if you could give us some insights into what changed about your design?
Sure. So our original designs brought the building up to the setback. So, you know, they're really concerned about the massing and the way that the public would be engaging with this. So having, this was, this was also staff's concern. So they really pushed us to have active use out there to help secure the neighborhood and provide additional security. You know, we don't have a, we don't have a cafe. We don't have any of those. So, you know, we, we've brought the drop-off out there. We've brought the valet out there, also providing more green space. There's an eight-foot walk along there right now. And so we've put additional pathways on our property to help engage with the street. They, that includes seating, really kind of as a pull-off. If you wouldn't feel comfortable walking down the street, to come along here, say hi, you know, engage with, engage with your neighbors. So that was one. Pulling the building massing back. So we had to, we went through and tiered the project. So the building was originally up here because it's such a narrow site, and you can see that we narrowed up another 50 feet. So the massing was brought forward. So they asked that we not do that. We asked that we try to locate it furthest back on the property as we could. Obviously, we didn't want to go all the way back, so centralizing that architectural mass in there, I think, worked well. Tiering the architecture as it, as it raised from the street. They didn't want us to make sure that we were parking in the neighborhood. That's going on, you know, as the, as the neighborhood kind of builds out. They wanted to make sure they weren't, we weren't parking in the neighborhood. So we've provided additional 40 spaces over staff. That's, that's over a million dollars in additional parking within the building. We also provided additional setbacks on the sides. Those are down to a minimum of 15. We've got side setbacks and greenways along the sides of the building. So it went from 15 to 20. Those are additional parkways that you'll see along the south and the north. They were concerned with our trash, so we've internalized our trash. So it's actually in air-conditioned rooms that will be just wheeled out on days, on the trash days. One of their comments is that we thought we went and cut down all the trees that had, you know, eventually grown between our properties. And, you know, we are going to internalize our under, our underground utilities so that doesn't happen. FPL came and, and hat-racked everything out of there. So that, I think, will help a lot. We put the art in public places, so everybody will enjoy it. And again, that human scale was, was the main push.
Thank you. And, and looking at that human scale, I think that's a lot of the concern that I've heard. It's not particularly on the height. It's on the massing of the podium. And so just in, in some of the things you said there, the, the podium is gonna have an additional five-foot setback to what code requires by switching to an RPD, it requires an additional five-foot. So I think that's helpful to the neighbors. Looking at the podium, is the size of the podium because parking had to be internalized? Because there's a lot of amenities for the building? Is there any way to shrink the, the podium down? Or it's, it's mostly, you know, a give-and-take for parking in the neighborhood versus a size of the building?
Well, I think it's a give-and-take. I, I, you know, I, I think when we look at this corridor and what, what's been done in the past are just, you know, a, a building in the middle of a sea of parking lots. And I don't think that's what the city should strive to. I think internalizing that is very important. And I think it helps with the overall feel and setting a standard for the future.
And so my final question is, in the, the landscape buffer, particularly on the side setbacks where it abuts the single-family home to the north and then the condo to the south, are there increased landscape buffers there? I know on the south side in particulars where everything kind of got hat-racked out. Is there additional landscape buffer that will be put in that 20-foot setback?
Absolutely. So normally when we bring RPDs here, we're actually, and the one you saw before, asked for tree and shrub reductions. We've got a half-acre of submerged lands that we're not utilizing. We've taken those trees and put them along here. So not only do you have your, oop, not only do you have your standard buffer, you've got additional greenway that's adjacent to the building. So we're able to meet and exceed those code standards along both sides. And again, on the north side with the residential development, we actually have his recommendation and letter supporting the project. That was the over 200 letters that I submitted to the clerk while the video was going on.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Do you have a photo or a rendering of the view from a standing perspective or from the road perspective in front of the building, looking east, looking at the entrance? Okay, I just wanted to get a better idea of what you were describing there.
So those, so that's, that's the street. That's the additional walkway and seating that's put in there, the 26 feet of green. We've got vegetative, vegetation coming back from the building. The, the, the architecture steps back each layer that it goes up in the air. Again, to ensure compatibility, we're, although we're not in a historic district, we do have historic right across the street from us. So we wanted to be sensitive of that, and that was a major concern when we were meeting with NCON and Northwood Shores, that we provide that pedestrian feel and approach to the building and not have the massing right up there on the street.
Great, thank you. And you said that the public art piece will be in this area?
The public, what'd you say?
The public art, art piece?
Yes, public, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, public art will be just about where these are going. Right here and right here. So we, yes, we put placeholders for that.
So, so the pedestrian feel is, is quite welcoming?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think it's been, you've heard that in multiple projects tonight, that we wanted to make sure that we're compatible with the neighborhood, that we push that massing back. We push that building back and the, and the major massing over 120 feet back from the, from our property line.
And you've also, to some degree, activated that part of the street, which probably hadn't been activated from a pedestrian standpoint.
That's correct.
Other questions? All right, I don't see any hands, so I, we have a number of cards here. Steve Simpson supports it. I am in favor of this project and own property nearby. Alec Munoz, as a Palm Beach resident, I fully support the Alba project as it will bring jobs and economic impact. Okay, I'm gonna read off three names and start making your way to the podium. Louise Stoney, Kim Barbary, Marilyn Taylor.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Louise Stoney. I live in Old Northwood. I also own a condo in the Eaton House, which is right next door to this proposed building. Tonight's meeting started out with a discussion of Nora, which I think is a fabulous project, and it's exactly in keeping with what we want for the north end. We then, previously, I was involved in Seamud. Again, a project that was a planned development where there was a lot of compromise, a lot of engagement with the neighborhoods. We came up with a plan. We were all happy with it. I mean, not everybody was happy with it. We all had compromises, but it was good, right? I underscore both of those projects because this project is the exact opposite of that. These developers are trying to squeeze an enormous building on a tiny lot. They are talking about pedestrian space, but really, it's a teeny little alley between things. It's nothing like what we saw with, by the way, the Flagler Towers, which is incredibly impressive. Lots of space, acres, room to walk. That is not what this project is. Mayor, I totally respect your wanting to activate the street. I'm a big person who's into activating streets. Let me tell you, this street is active. Every day, there are people walking up and down the street. It's very vibrant community. It is not a neglected part of West Palm Beach. In fact, it's really precious history. You're talking about the Palm Beach Sailing Club. Started with a property that was owned by the Dodge family and has a historic boathouse. Just north of that is Flotilla Club, 85-year-old nonprofit club with mariners gather. North of that is the Manatee Lagoon, which is preserving manatees which are dying. This is a really important, precious piece of waterfront that I believe is at risk when we open the floodgates for a development like this, which is gonna then have more. This whole street will quickly be a row of high-rise buildings, completely blocking off the neighborhood. I'm also worried about the infrastructure. By the way, this street floods regularly. There's a serious problem here. So one of my questions actually is, is to what extent was there a vulnerability assessment done? And if so, is it a modern, one that was done in recent years? Because I understand that down in, in Broward County and, and Fort Lauderdale, they're having serious problems with approving development based on old vulnerability plans. And now the city is stuck with major investments that, and, and the developers didn't have to pay for that. So the bottom line is this. You have exercised incredible leadership in this city, and particularly in the north end, for planning. We need a master plan for North Flagler. We don't need growth by waiver. We need to pause. We need to put a pause on this. Really think about what's good for the neighborhood, whether an enormous building like this. I have 20, I have a little bit more. I wanted to just say quickly, oh, I didn't. Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kim Barbary?
Good evening, commissioners. Good evening, mayor. My name is Kim Barbary. I am a resident of Old Northwood and also a condo owner in the Eaton House just south of this project. I've been a strong supporter of development in the north end. I love the new Nora District. I love the South Flagler project that was on the docket tonight. And interesting with the South Florida, the Flagler project this evening, there's a good amount of land associated with this. This piece of land, it's a sliver of a piece of land, and you're putting, it's like concrete from edge to edge. I mean, the, the, the front where it's the setback, it's so minimal. It's so minimal. And my, my, my biggest concern for this, even if this were to come through, is we need a master plan for Flagler. We need a master plan for the north end. Because what's gonna happen is you're gonna have all these little slivers of land, and you're, it's gonna be development by waiver, by variance. And you're gonna end up with having high-rise buildings with zero lot lines. And that's just not what we want. Do we want this to look like Fort Lauderdale or Miami? And actually, if you look at Fort Lauderdale or Miami, at least they have more than slivers of bushes in between their condos. And that's all I've got. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Marilyn Taylor?
She doesn't want to speak.
She doesn't want to speak? All right, I'm gonna read off three more names. Does she have anything? She opposes it. She doesn't want to speak. Okay. Sand Geier, Rebecca Miller, and Will Davis. Sam Guyer, Rebecca Miller, and Will Davis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Sean Guyer, I'm the managing partner of Pescatori Restaurant at 1600 Nordixie. I'm also a resident at the Eaton House directly adjacent to the proposed project. Um, I think I'd echo a lot of what people were saying about the Nora project in this. My father's been a resident of Northwood for 26 years. Um, I've been visiting the area. I used to be a member at the Scuba Club, uh, when that was still there. It seems like development on the north end, especially in this part of Northwood, has always been elusive. And as my father acquired property, there was always a promise of some, uh, Trump project or a Raibovich project or a Jeff Green project, and they just never materialized. I think now we're seeing with, um, you know, the economic boom, the population increase in the area, um, a chance to really build momentum for the north end. And I think this development could be a key, um, component of that. I think it would, you know, activate, um, more development in the area, which isn't necess, which isn't, I don't believe to be a bad thing. I think, uh, a lot of Northwood's been waiting that for 20-plus years and it's just never materialized. We've seen development on the south end of town, on the east-west access, but it's always been elusive for, uh, Northwood, it seems like, so. I, I wholeheartedly support this, uh, project, both as a neighbor and as a business owner on the north end of town. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Rebecca Miller?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Happy New Year and thanks so much for your continued service and your energy representing my city. So, I really, really appreciate your time. Uh, the reality is often that luxury, um, paves the roads, if you will, leading to it. I both live in Old Northwood Historic District and own a company that operates on Northwood Road in the Village. The path to our neighborhood and our village and beyond is greatly in need of paving. And this board knows it and is very familiar with the nuance of what I'm speaking to. Alba, along with Icon Marina Village, the Anchor Project, Jeff Green's, uh, One West Palm and the Curry Corridor, uh, they almost act like a map guiding people up this corridor from where Quadrille comes in to, uh, North US One. And it's this beautiful trail, uh, attracting more and more people to live in our community, to work in our community, to invest in our community, to become a part of our community. So, we need the increase, increase, I mean, talk money, we need the increased tax base. Uh, we have several CRAs in this, in the city. I'm not sure that everyone understands it. The downtown CRA does not contribute to the north end. The north end has its own CRA that is not as full as other CRA's budgets. We desperately need this tax base. Uh, we need improved infrastructure. We need the funding to the CRA that will attract the development to North US One that we so very much need. Broadway will possibly share or even be the centerpiece of this revival and redevelopment. The traffic has to go somewhere and that's something that, um, I know a lot of the developers I'm involved with, um, were trying to figure out opportunities for how Broadway can interact with this new development. I know all of you have been in on those discussions as well. Northwood Village will feel the impact as the restaurants will fill up and retail shops have customers on a regular basis. The entire Seamud will benefit. I just don't see the downside to this and I'm very much in favor of this project. Thanks very much and thanks again.
Thank you. Will Davis?
Good evening once again, Will Davis. Happy New Year to everyone. Um, this is probably the second time that I've opposed a project in the city of West Palm Beach. First one was the Sculpture Gardens that were first proposed in the hills and finally got out of talking and trying to work things out through these growing pains. Um, the building is breathtaking. The project is amazing. It just does not fit in that small little wedge of where the parcel is. You know, when you start seeing it from, if birds IV, you start seeing the massiveness of this building towering over the other smaller buildings and the neighborhoods that surround that little area. Um, they're proposing that there's gonna get security for the area. I think it's only security for the building, not security that's gonna be going on for the residents that are probably struggling with the security that's happening around. So, maybe that should be discussed. And I do believe there was a typo because it said Alba, Palm Beach. This is the city of West Palm Beach. So, please don't disrespect our great city and just call it Palm Beach. Palm Beach is on the opposite side of the intercoastal. So, I love the city of West Palm Beach and let's miss, make sure that this project fits in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna read three more names. Anthony Mortimer, Alex Millan, and Senna Spence, I believe. Apologize if I mispronounced that. Mr. Mortimer, Anthony Mortimer?
Martine.
Martine, that'll work too. Mr. Martinez, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Mr. Martinez, my apologies, sir.
No, no worries. Good evening. Thank you for your time. Uh, so I have the privilege of being a member of the Northwood community and knowing the development group, uh, personally and professionally. In fact, I am a member of this community because of Mr. Balloon and his advocacy of West Palm Beach over the last five to six years. In this group, you have individuals who are transparent, collaborative, as you can tell, and a visionary, uh, for this community. They are truly seeking to make Northwood a better place to live and work. I believe that this project will be the inflection point to shape Broadway into a safer, more vibrant Main Street of sorts, uh, for the northern corridor and bring a lot of much more welcome permanent jobs to that community. Uh, lastly, in my opinion, uh, this condo development would actually be a good complement to the adjacent rental community that's being developed in the Raibovich Marina, which, you know, the rental, uh, the rental pool will be somewhat transient in nature. So, to me, this project is actually going to bring this community what we're looking for, right? Which is that sense of community, longstanding growth and, and prosperity for the, the surrounding community. So, I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Millan?
How are you? Uh, Alex Millan, I'm in full support of this project. Um, the north end's been lagging behind other parts of the city for some time and I believe this is a great opportunity for it to finally get the investment that it deserves. Um, it's a fantastic project from a fantastic development team and I know they'll really do a great job and it'll help provide, you know, great tax revenue and, um, also better opportunities for the north end. Thank you.
Thank you. Senna Spence?
Good evening, Mayor James and Commission. My name is Serena Spence. I am a real estate agent that also specializes in waterfront properties and I live on Flagler, about two buildings from the proposed project. Um, I am in support of this project because I've always had an inkling to the, the vision of where Northwood could go. I actually relocated from Clematis Downtown after living there for eight years, uh, desiring to live on waterfront in Northwood 'cause I understood, um, where it would, you know, be able to, um, evolve. So, uh, when I encountered the project, I actually, um, discovered the Ice Cream Social on the way home and I felt led to join and I'm happy I did because, um, to see the community activity there, to see that, uh, everyone who kind of stopped by, as I said, there's a lot of activity on Flagler due to the parks, the charming parks that we have and, um, all the walkability. Um, but we do not have an activation on Flagler that is, um, walkable from the street. And there's not a lot of any seating actually at the parks. Um, you know, I live very close to the Manatee Park. There's only two benches. I know they're doing a lot of work now. That's going to be beautiful, uh, with the, like, the amenities for children, um, adding jungle gyms and stuff like that, but there's still not a lot of seating. So, I do appreciate the activation that they will add and the art. I believe that the allure that downtown has is inevitable to bring it to Northwood with Raibovich and everything that Raibovich is doing for the optics of Northwood. Um, so I think to keep that trend going is very advantageous, especially for the jobs that it will bring. Um, they said over 400 jobs could be created from this opportunity. That doesn't include the sales, uh, for people like me and people who look like me who want to be in waterfront. Um, also, I think when the dock slip moves forward, that will add waterfront amenities. Of course, the space for water toys. I don't think we have, um, as much for smaller crafts in Northwood. Um, so I am in full support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna read three more names. Simon DuPlessis, Steve Gormley. Actually, it looks like Mr. Gormley, uh, does not wish to speak, but he is in support of the project. Trail Tabor and Umar Randolph. Simon DuPlessis, Trail Tabor, and Umar Randolph.
Good evening. My name is Simon DuPlessi. Pleasure to, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Um, I'm here in full support for this project. I strongly believe that the Northwood community deserves a building of this caliber that we need. It needs to have new facelift and it also brings new security. I'm an avid runner and in the evening and night, especially this time of the year, when the sun comes down early, it's really dark there. So, having those buildings bring some bright light there, have it, and more security, I think it's something that we definitely need. Um, I've met with the builders and you can tell their passion for this community. They're all in and, um, I'm fully supportive and I hope you can support this good project also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trail Tabor?
Hello, Trail Tabor. 25-year resident of West Palm Beach. Um, I've certain, seen certain areas getting improved and developed and it seems to me that the Northwood corridor has been overlooked for far too many years, even with all the amazing waterfront vistas. Um, I'm very excited to see the progress happening. I drive through this area constantly going to North Palm Beach and Singer Island to see family and friends and, uh, where there are beautiful developments there. And I feel it's just time for the Northwood area to, uh, has been, uh, the Northwood area has been a bit sidelined. And with the related site under construction, the downtown area growing rapidly, Northwood, in my view, needs new development and I fully support the proposed development on this site as proposed by the developer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Omar Randolph?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As someone that has also lived in West Palm Beach for a very long time, 37 years today, actually, um, I've enjoyed watching our city grow and I remember as a kid, before City Place even existed, um, it was dangerous. I lost a friend on Clematis when I was, uh, probably 18-years-old. I'm happy to see, you know, during Lois Frankel's years, she improved the safety in the downtown area. Um, later in life, I moved to 3950 North Flagler, which, um, is just a stone's throw away from the former Scuba Club. And I didn't wanna walk around there at night. So, um, when I saw this project come about, and as somebody that also got their Scuba license at the Scuba Club, I was happy to see that, you know, this area is, you know, has the chance to finally transform and I'm happy to see what Raibovich is doing. So, uh, in conclusion, I'd say that this is a great project and something that the neighborhood would benefit with.
Thank you. Three more names. John Stevenson, Herbert Bryant, and Daniel Oyes. Actually, Daniel looks like he does not wanna speak, but he supports it. Great improvement for the north end of West Palm Beach. I strongly support this project. The next card, Emmanuel Hamad, also doesn't wanna speak. He supports it. We need to grow as a community like other cities in the area. Great revitalization in West Palm Beach. I need one more name. Okay, Scott Diamond is the third name. Okay, Mr. Stevenson?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, so I'm here in full support of the Alba project. I grew up in this beautiful city and, uh, even though I'm only 25, I've been able to see it grow as I've, uh, as I've grown up. And I remember visiting this neighborhood many times and, uh, I truly think that having a development such as this will be a great asset to the neighborhood. I know that a lot of other parts of West Palm Beach have seen booming development and growth and prosperity have come with it. And I know the city of West Palm Beach has been putting in significant efforts to revitalize Northwood and has had significant success. And I truly believe that this project would add to that success, bring, bring a substantial amount of business to the local, uh, local economy and I think it's overall a wonderful project. Thank you.
Thank you. Herbert Bryant?
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name's Herbert Bryant. I've lived in, uh, Old Northwood Historic District for about 25 years. Um, I think this project would be an excellent addition to our neighborhood. Um, I'd like to compliment the City Commission for attracting such a quality development team and I really just can't see a reason that this isn't a positive for the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Diamond?
Good evening again, Mayor James and City Commission. Scott Diamond, uh, I live at 3410 North Flagler Drive, so I live, uh, a few blocks south of this particular project. Um, I have, uh, units in Placido Mar, uh, the corner of 50th Street, nine units, uh, the corner of 54th Street, single-family house, uh, and then four or five other, uh, properties from 20 to 1 to, uh, to, um, 3401, on Flag, all on Flagler, on Flagler Drive. I'm in full support of this project. Um, I know that, uh, some people got up and said, "Oh, well, the size of the property," but I think the developers took that into account when they designed this project. And I, I think it's another fantastic addition, um, to North Flagler, Flagler, North Flagler Shores. Um, and it's, it's just, looks really incredible and I'd love to see it go up. And, uh, I appreciate your consideration. Again, I'm in full support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, have two other cards, neither of whom wants to speak. Kelly Leighton, uh, I support the Alba project in progressing the north end forward. And then Erica Moyer, I work in this area and fully support the change Alba will bring to the community. Okay? Do we have anything in the portal? Madam Clerk, okay.
Blanca Glor, 411 31st Street, West Palm Beach. I'm not in favor of urban planning by waiver, so I oppose approval of the Alba request for zoning waiver. Annalise Gore, 411 31st Street, West Palm Beach. I request that the commission reject this request for a zoning waiver and quickly put in place a process for planned development that respects this historic community and enables growth without, and it didn't, that, without, didn't say what the end is. I oppose. Emilio Marcus, 411 31st Street, West Palm Beach. We request that the commission reject this request for a zoning waiver and quickly put in place a process for planned development that respects this historic community and Ada Boff, 501 57th Street, West Palm Beach. Flagler's too small to be adding high-rises and this area is a lot of residential and the traffic with a tight street is unheard of. We should not allow this to happen, absolutely not. Steve Augburn, 331 52nd Street, West Palm Beach. I oppose the Alba project and waivers requested. This is too large a building for the property size. Traffic increase due to Marina Village will already be a problem. The Alba project will only make it worse. The north end has no interest in the skyline like Miami or Fort Lauderdale condo row. We should prefer to retain the historic area. I'm not opposed to building at all, but smaller-scale projects that do not take away the view and sun for neighbors are more appropriate. Along those lines, there should be an overall plan for building in the north end as opposed to whoever comes first gets to put in their design without thought to the overall effect. Angela Augburn, 331 52nd Street, West Palm Beach. I request that the commission reject this request for a zoning waiver, put in place zoning that respects this historic community and enable growth without disrupting the already fragile infrastructure. Raf Caston, 937 Big Nonia Road, West Palm Beach. I would like to thank BG High Capital for investing in the north end of the city of West Palm Beach. Very excited about this elegant Alba residence coming to North Flagler Drive. This project will bring great opportunities, economic development, sustainability, and bring life back to this area that has been neglected due to limited development in this area. Walkability will increase as new developments are planned. I envision great planned residential developments such as rental, luxury- I envision great planned residential developments such as rental, luxury and ultra, ultra-luxury rental towers. This has been a blighted area for forty years or more. This is the next up, up-and-coming area, and I strongly encourage you to approve this smart and sustainable project that would increase our tax base. Elizabeth Maloney, fifty-two hundred North Flagler Drive, apartment eighteen oh five, West Palm Beach. I am opposed to this project. The size of the property does not warrant a huge size of this project. Mary Murphy, fifty-two hundred North Flagler Drive, number one seventy, West Palm Beach. We need a planned development that respects this historic community and enables growth without disrupting the already fragile infrastructure. The building and parking garage take up the entire property. Janet Pitt, forty-seven hundred North Flagler Drive, apartment two oh four, West Palm Beach. The ALBA project, although beautiful, should be required to be built on the existing ten-acre current requirement zoning law. Unfortunately, the property is only one point seven nine acres. Please do not approve a zoning waiver for this or any other project without planning for responsible growth and a change in zoning law. Rafael Faristir, five two four fifty-fifth Street, West Palm Beach. I am in support of zoning. Thomas Schausser, five oh nine twenty-seventh Street, West Palm Beach. I oppose, I oppose this item at this time. Douglas and Ariane Tepper, fifty-two hundred North Flagler Drive, number two zero zero one, West Palm Beach. We oppose this ALBA development. It's a flagrant rule breaker that insults our West Palm Beach laws, neighborhoods, and zoning efforts. Please be realistic and encourage reasonable development. Lucy George, forty-nine twelve North Flagler Drive, West Palm Beach. I oppose the ALBA project. Gerald Shields, four two three twenty-sixth Street, West Palm Beach. I am against this project. It is too big for a lot, and overshadows everything. It certainly doesn't fit in with the surrounding buildings. Michael Danchuk, thirty-six hundred Broadway, West Palm Beach. I am concerned about the extent of the ALBA project. Matthew Chambers, five eighteen thirty-fifth Street, West Palm Beach. I have spoken on and supported many projects all over the city. I would like to be able to support this project as well. However, I cannot. I am actively involved in helping to make our city, especially north end, a better place to live, work, and play for everyone. I urge you tonight to postpone this vote. At the planning board meeting on eleven sixteen twenty twenty-one, one of the questions to staff was what goes into making your decision on height, and one of the comments back was, they look at the direction of projects like this is going. This concerns me. I feel that we have already set a precedent that the city will support any development in the north end because residents like myself are begging for development. This is true. We are asking for development, thoughtful development, and not projects that enormously squeeze onto a lot to maximize the developer's profitability and do not look at the long-term impact that it may cause to a neighborhood and waterfront. You still have time to hold off on approving all these development waivers and come up with a north-end waterfront master plan. Thank you for your time. Beth O'Brien, five oh five thirty-third Street, West Palm Beach. This building should not be built in a residential neighborhood. It would tower over Eaton House and looks like a ridiculous monstrosity. Construction would also certainly cause damage to surrounding buildings. Can our water, infrastructure, and roads support this? William Woods, fifty-two hundred North Flagler Drive, number nineteen oh four, West Palm Beach. I am opposed to this request. Kathy Ahern, three two one five Pointe Avenue, West Palm Beach. I strongly oppose approval of this item. The commission should reject the request for a waiver to build a massive two-story building in a historic area zoned only for forty feet. Charles Michael Fahy, one nine oh fifty-two hundred North Flagler Drive, West Palm Beach. Becoming weary of developers returning to the table for more, very all of twist. It's a historic area and cannot be allowed to become another Miami. The site is too small for this proposed block. This amount of units is supposed to be on a ten-acre site. Linda Gross, fifty-six hundred North Flagler Drive, number nineteen ten, West Palm Beach. I came here to get away from the density and traffic of Miami-Dade and Broward Counties. During COVID, many people came here for the same reason and our weather. Our allure is in our prime location, close to everything, while being far enough away to maintain our small-town village-like way of life. West Palm Beach has suffered during the financial downturn, and it's been blighted. It is in need of development. However, development without a plan that takes into account our historic roots and homes that seek to reach the maximum vertical heights and build outs is a recipe for disaster. We need to have organized community meetings, also called charrettes, to outline our questions, concerns, and create a list of what our needs are. But there, from there, we need to develop a plan for growth and develop with our city planners and zoning. Let's take the time to do this the right way and not become another concrete jungle. Mark Robertson, four oh one thirty-fourth Street, West Palm Beach. Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. Please reject the zoning waiver requested for this ALBA project. I'm very pleased with the development of downtown West Palm Beach and happy the north end is getting much deserved attention. However, the north end is comprised of historic neighborhoods that consist of smaller dwellings that will quickly be dwarfed by this type of development. There are other properties at the north, north end of Flagler adjacent to the Palm Beach House already zoned for this, and properties in the vicinity of Kern Park, all which have a true master plan, would help identify. I beg you to pursue professional master plan for the entire north end of the city. Please do not make any changes to benefit developers without a sound master plan in place. In, In Skelly, two three six thirty-first Street, West Palm Beach. I oppose the ALBA project. Virginia Jordan, fifty-five eleven North Flagler Drive, West Palm Beach. Oppose ALBA project. Brian Alice, fifty-two hundred North Flagler Drive, apartment PH four, West Palm Beach. I live near the planned ALBA project, and I would like to inform the commission that I oppose the approval of the ALBA request for a zoning waiver. That's the last one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Advocate, Mr. Schmidt, do you want to respond to any of the concerns that have been expressed?
Yes, please. Three points, if I could. The first speaker with regard to drainage. With this project, the, the water quality will be much better during, during a storm event. And actually, the storage on-site will be much more than it's there right now. So in the development, in the development program, this project and the area will be much better off than it currently is with the parking lot that's on there. Number two, the security concerns. We've intentionally brought the valet and our security office to the front to benefit the community as a whole. And I think it's a really important thing to point out. It was hard to design to do that, and they're really kind of isolated out there. But I think it provides a place for the community to kind of go in that park-like setting and, you know, check in with people. And thirdly, we're not in a historic district. We are neighboring a historic district, and I think we've done considerable things to address their comments and make sure that we're compatible with that neighboring district. This happens all along Flagler Drive, not only in the north end, but also in the south end, you know, historic next to Elsie. I think we'll be very compatible, and I hope that we can move the project forward tonight and ask for your consideration.
Very good. Questions, comments? Commissioner Lambert, Commissioner Schof.
Thank you. I am very much in favor of development in this area. I know that the residents, many of whom we've heard from tonight, have been speaking and wanting development here. We very much want a good project, but I know we want the right project, too. Could you go back to one of the slides of the, of the front and the massing of the garage? I mean, I will say, at first, if you could go to that aerial, I think that's a really good one, the one right before that. Eight, slide eight, yeah. I mean, you showed the slides comparing the height, and I, you know, I, I think that it is comparable to what's there. It's, it's not a wall of height. It's spaced out from the other height of, of the neighboring buildings. But I do share some of the concern that we heard tonight about the massing of the podium. And I don't know if you can speak a little bit more about that. I know, I think Commissioner Schof had asked a question in agenda review about what's allowed there by RAIT already. So if you could just speak to that a little bit.
So the current, the current adopted plan, still on record here, is basically our podium. It's at fifty-five feet height. It goes the entire length of the property. We have not done that. We've, we've brought our massing to the center to be more compatible. We haven't stretched it out thus far. So and, and this is what the current code produces.
Could I clarify it, if you don't mind? So you're saying currently, the site, the site plan is approved?
That's, that's absolutely correct. This is still a valid and current approval on the property. So it's really, really our podium, and this was only twenty-eight units. We're asking to do the fifty-five units, which is the maximum density allowed on here. This didn't have any waivers at the time, but I don't think this is an appropriate design for the area. I mean, what it produces is a bunch of asphalt. It produces a bunch of cars on the ground. It produces a bunch of cars right next door to neighbors, not any green space whatsoever for the community to enjoy, not for the neighbors to enjoy, and I think our vision is, is much more appealing and better for the whole Northwood area. Again, this is, this is, you know, this is what the code produces. This is fifty-five foot tall. That's what our podium height is. It's actually sixty to the top of our, to the top of our area. But this is what it produces, and that's what the code produces. So asking for four waivers comparatively to other projects that I've brought in, the ones you've heard tonight, is very minimal. We think that we've done a very good job of producing a lot of green space, extra vegetation to buffer those neighbors. It's basically a dual, if I can move to it, a dual landscape buffer that's happening along here, along the south end. So it's really a parkway to the back. There's a parkway along the front and a parkway along here.
And is that, is that parkway, is that open to the public to walk?
No, no, that's not open to the public. No, the front end would be all open to the public, but beyond about this point, it would be private.
And what are those?
But it is open space. I'm sorry.
Thank you, sorry. What are the yellow squares on the top left and bottom left?
So these squares, when I was going through the presentation, it was just highlighting green spaces there. There was concern that, you know, when we were talking to the neighbors, we had six pools at this location. We have two pools, a sunrise pool and a sunset pool. There are two other private ones on the townhomes that are on the very end. So those are green space and decking. Again, trying to open that green space and pushing our massing to the center there where the white spot is. So you're, so this, this white centralized area here is our massing of the building. You can see that's only taking up less than a third of the property versus spreading it out, you know, over the whole, over the whole thing. So we decided to take that and go height instead of massing over the entire property. It produces over twenty percent green space versus what the standard code is.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schof.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to start and say thank you to all the neighbors that came out here this evening. You know, I know this has been a topic discussion that I've met with several of you on, talked to on the phone, and there's been a lot of feedback from both sides. There's a lot of people that I know and respect on the list of people who support, and there's a lot of people I know and respect on the list of people who have concerns. One thing is clear, and one thing I agree with wholeheartedly, and that is, we could really benefit from looking at a holistic plan of development in the north end. As to my earlier comments this evening, getting a plan like that might open up opportunities for TDR programs, et cetera. I guess when it pertains to this particular development, I would argue, one doesn't have to preset the other. I know that's some hard information, but opportunities for development are what we've been looking for in the north end. And opportunities aren't always going to be there. So when I look at a development like this, I guess I look at it from a perspective of, if you could pull up the aerial view, looking at what could be built there, which is approved today, versus what's being proposed, and...
This, this view, or I'm sorry, this view?
Yeah, this view. You know, looking at what, what we just looked at with Commissioner Lambert on the current development plan, looking at a lot of asphalt and buildings that are essentially the same height as the podium. You know, I look at this and I try to see the benefits of increased landscape buffer, green space, et cetera. I, I think there are a lot of concerns that I've heard from neighbors on impacts during construction. Things that are, are going to come with any construction that, that come there. And I think, you know, the more that we can work with the neighborhood, the, the better off it would be for everybody. If there is any additional setback that we can get here, I think it would, it would go a long way. To that end, though, I don't know how much is enough. I guess to look at it from the perspective of what could be built versus what is being proposed. I certainly prefer what is being proposed to what is currently allowable to be built there and think it adds a nice amenity. So I guess I would request that we continue to work with community, get feedback. As some of our commenters had mentioned, they'd like to get to a point to, to be able to support. There's a lot of people that support development within the north end, so if we can get to that place, I think it's ideal. Again, I understand not everyone is going to agree on that, but to the point that we can try to work together, I guess I would appreciate that.
I have a sense of deja vu. I think I was the only person on this dais who was around when the Bristol was, was being discussed. And, and some of the same arguments against the Bristol, I'm hearing tonight, it's on too small of a piece of land. It's a monstrosity, et cetera. But, but I think if we look back at what the Bristol did for that particular quarter, it spawned LaClara, it is spawning Flagler Towers, even Forte. It, it is leading to, I think, an uptick in the, the caliber of residents there and the caliber of citizens who are going to be there. And that, to me, has a spillover effect. As these people are residing in, in these homes, if this is approved, you know, they will go to Northwood Road and, and, and cater the restaurants there and the, the art shops there. And it, it, it just has such a spillover effect. And, and I think as you look at the design, and I alluded to this earlier, the pedestrian experience, it doesn't feel like this huge hulking monstrosity of a building as you're walking down Flagler. It, it is, seems to be very inviting. And, you know, I, so when you're at street level, you don't feel like you are looking up at this huge monstrosity of a building. I mean, I think you, you know, the, the developer has done a yeoman's job in terms of designing something that works for that space. Can you go, there is a slide there that showed some of the waivers for planned developments that we've had in recent years, that, that waiving the ten-acre requirement. I don't know if it was yours. Yes. So you're proposing one point seven three acres. This body has approved planned developments even smaller than that. So that is not an unusual ask. And I just think as you, you bring this density to the north end, it will only benefit the north end. And I've been up here where there have been, you know, a constant ask for, we need more development at the north end. We need more commercial activity. We need people on the streets. And I think a project like this moves in that direction. It can lead to that accomplishment, and opportunity only strikes once. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. What is the height of the massing that abuts Flagler Drive, if you can go back to that front? Is that the fifty-five feet, the podium, that abuts Flagler Drive?
Yes, it is, but it steps back as we go up, and I may have to bring Keith up here to talk about it. But the red line is, this is Flagler Drive. The red line is how it steps up as it goes back. So we don't have, we don't have fifty-five or sixty feet right on, right on the property. It steps back, you know, at each level as we move it back away from Flagler Drive with the massing of the residential tower over a hundred and twenty feet back.
So you don't get to that fifty-five foot until you get to that green part up at the top there?
That's correct.
Of the podium? And what's, what's the height there, that, that first step? What's that height there?
Oh, this is only, this is our first single-story.
Single-story?
Yeah, that's just first single-story there. That's where our active use is.
Okay. And how about the building to the south? What's the height of the building to the south? And then I assume the building to the north is a single-family, single-story home?
Yeah, so the, the, the adjacent parcel you'll see here is a two-story.
Two-story.
Yep. It's about fifty years old. You know, the issue was that they were looking, you know, they felt like they were looking into a, a tall, massive building, but actually the, the previous approval is the same height that we're proposing right now, or the, the current approval. The current approval right here, if I can, this is what the current approval is. It's a fifty-five feet. So, you know, they're, they're looking directly into a building fifteen feet away, plus they're about seven to eight feet in from their property. We're proposing, we're proposing an additional five feet, so twenty, so they're about twenty-eight feet from this with a double layer of landscaping and a, and a pedestrian pathway in there. So we thought we've done a good job of really greening that up as much as we could to mitigate their issues.
So by right, though, you could go fifty-five feet and fill up the whole property?
That's right, yeah.
Which probably wouldn't, wouldn't be so aesthetically pleasing.
No, I think this is, I think that this was a much better approach and, you know, this wasn't, this wasn't our first time. I mean, we, we went through probably three different designs. And Keith, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but...
Good evening. Keith Spino, Spino Work Architect. Real quick to get off subjects for a second. You know, we met Kenny Baboon about three years ago when he came to our office and said, I want to look at a piece of property. And his excitement and, and vision of looking at a piece of property in this location was just, you know, I've lived in, I'm proud to say I've lived here a little longer than Harvey, but I've lived in the city of West Palm Beach for almost sixty years and done a lot of projects around here, lived in Northwood for years, and still have tons of friends and family that live there. And I'm really passionate about that. You know, I don't want to have to go to Thanksgiving and hear my relatives complain about a building we did in Northwood. But Kenny saw the vision for this piece of property. And we looked at the design that you've seen, this five-story building that was currently approved and someone could build without coming to City Commission, that they can go out and build it today. I promise you that the neighbors in every direction are going to be significantly happier about what the space feels like at a pedestrian level, at a vehicular level, and even for the building to the south end at the second story level, because our building is substantially set back off of Flagler and it's substantially further apart from the property. And, you know, we worked repeatedly with John, you know, Roach and the planning department to keep moving this building around. You know, when we first came in, we had the tower significantly closer to the west of Flagler. And everybody said that the neighborhood is passionate. You know, we, if you live in that area, you know there's tall buildings. You know, Rybivich has been approved for five towers. And what we learned by the process that the city went through with Rybivich is that, you know, we, we can understand the tall building and we're okay with it, but we want you to really respect the relationship of the houses to the west of Flagler, the pedestrians, vehicular access along Flagler, and the, and the other properties along it. So we kept pushing the building back. The, the five-story building that you can build by right is, was substantially closer on all sides. Now, the, the biggest thing that's hard to really note here is that the ground floor of that building was a giant parking lot. And you see all the cars. So at night, you're in your beautiful little apartment next door and you wonder why these bright lights keep shining in your window. It's because the people next door are driving their cars to and from their home. And, you know, those are some things that it's hard to, you know, convince everybody of the improvement that this building is over what was there and can be built by right. But, you know, it's, all that has been led by Kenny Baboon, the, our client and the developer of this property. And it's, it's important to mention that because, you know, we've talked about the, you know, the neighbors are really upset about the construction going on with Rybivich right now. I don't blame them. You know, it's a big project. But I know that when we get to the construction, you know, Kenny's going to run out there and do everything he can to help this project, you know, be loved by the neighbors and we're excited to be part of it. So sorry for the long-winded response.
Okay. Any other, Mr. Roach, you have something to say?
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify some factual information with regards to what is allowed by right versus what they are proposing. Because I think there's a little bit of confusion about what was previously approved. The code today allows a building up to forty feet in height at a minimum setback of fifteen feet. So you could have a building as close as to the side property line, fifteen feet, that is forty foot tall. To go above that forty foot in height, it then triggers two foot in height for every one foot of setback. So you could have a sixty foot tall building, yes, but that sixty foot tall building would have to be thirty feet from the side property lines. And so the previous project, while the parking lot, the drive aisles and everything do go almost all the way to the property line, the building itself is actually on the other side of the drive aisle. So you're closer to thirty feet, twenty-five to thirty feet before you actually get to the building. So that is a little bit greater than what the applicant is proposing. But again, it was by right, it was a fifty foot, fifty-five foot tall building. But all you got was asphalt driveways. You didn't get, all you got was the minimal landscape buffer as part of that. So I just wanted to clarify as far as what height of building you could get, what setback you had to have in order to get that and so forth. You can have a forty foot tall building, but it, and it could only be fourteen, fifteen feet away from the property line, but in order to go higher, you would have to, to come further off the property line to do that.
Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify one thing and then, and have one statement. So in the clarification, I seem to remember when Marina Village came in, that required the study because admittedly, there is a capacity issue somewhere in the future on Flagler Drive. Flagler Drive can only get so wide. So when we did Marina Village, was there not a study that studied the east-west corridors of how to get traffic off of Flagler Drive and then out to Broadway?
Yeah, there was a substantial and many, many versions of a traffic study that were done as part of that, because they were, I mean, they were proposing over a thousand residential units. And the goal of that study was to make sure that Flagler Drive did not need to be widened to accommodate that development. Now, that study also took into account undeveloped parcels. I'm not sure if this was specifically one of them, because it did have some development on it at time, but it looked at undeveloped and underdeveloped parcels as part of that and what additional units could potentially be, be built on top of the Icon Marina Village proposal. The results of that study with some improvements came back, the Flagler Drive could sustain itself in its current configuration with some modifications to Forty-Fifth and Flagler, with some modifications to the intersections at Broadway and Forty-Fifth, with some modifications to Fortieth Street. And all of that got rolled into Icon Marina Village's development order. They're reevaluating some of it specifically with regards to the Fortieth Street and the impact to the school. So they're, they're taking a look at that study again, but only looking at the Fortieth Street component of it.
Sure.
But yes, it, it looked at all of these properties from a traffic standpoint of could Flagler sustain itself in its current configuration with all of that development.
Thank you. I think those are some great first steps in, in potentially looking down into the future at what the development plan could look like for the entire north end. I guess, you know, as I look at this particular development, what becomes really hard is looking today at an empty piece of land. So you have empty piece of land versus what one plan is versus what another plan is. And, you know, honestly, I look at the plan that's here in front of us today, and if somebody were proposing this for the south end, I'd be salivating over it, thinking, why wouldn't it come to the north end? And so, you know, I know change is hard and it, it may not be perfect for everybody. And I may be that neighbor that's getting an earful when it comes to Thanksgiving, but I think if we're trying to make a big change in the north end, we've, we've got to start somewhere. So, you know, I will be supporting this this evening to move through, hoping that we can continue to work together, continue to communicate, and really make the north end a better place to live. So thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number forty-nine twenty-seven dash twenty-two, changing the zoning designation of plus or minus one point seven-three acres located at forty-seven oh eight dash forty-seven fourteen North Flagler Drive from multifamily, high residential, high-density residential to residential plan development and granting a waiver of the minimum area required. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in section ninety-four dash thirty-two and ninety-four dash two oh seven, the city's zoning and land development regulations. The City Commission finds that particular circumstances justify the reduction of the planned development acreage to less than ten acres and that the requirement for planned development district zoning and the benefits to be derived from the planned development district zoning can be derived in such lesser area.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number forty-nine twenty-seven dash twenty-two. And also the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the city of West Palm Beach by rezoning plus or minus one point seven-three acres located at four-seven oh eight dash four-seven one four North Flagler Drive for multifamily, high-density residential to residential plan development to create the average residential plan development, providing for the establishment of development regulations by separate resolution, declaring the zoning map amendment deconsistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, revising the zoning map of the city accordingly, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eight point three, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number forty-nine eighty-eight dash twenty-one to designate the former Hatches Department Store and related sites at three oh one Comata Street, three hundred Banyon Boulevard, and one sixty-one North Olive Avenue on the West Palm Beach Register of Historic Places.
Mayor, Kimberly Rothenberg, on behalf of the City Attorney's Office, I spoke with the applicant's attorney this afternoon, who is requesting additional time to obtain additional information. There's a proposed motion to continue the consideration of ordinance number forty-nine eighty-eight twenty-one to the February seventh agenda, but they're requesting instead that we continue it to the January twenty-fourth agenda.
So they want to continue it to January twenty-fourth?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, I need a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Uh, so moved, is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. So it's moved to January twenty-fourth, okay? Item eight point four, public hearing of resolution number one dash twenty-two, a request for a minor subdivision to approve the plat entitled Kozakoff Platt. Mr. Schmidt?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, a plat for Broward Block, Kozakoff Platt. It's located one point, one point two eight acres, half block off North Flagler Drive, southwest corner of Piccadilly and Broward, hundred and two multifamily units, ninety thousand square feet. This is the site plan and the proposed elevations. We're just looking at the plat as condition number six, approved on June twenty-fifth of two thousand twelve, resolution four, one forty-five dash twelve. We had a condition to replat the property. We're currently in for building permits. I would like your support to complete this plat.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant? Staff, do you have anything to add to that presentation?
For the record, John Roach, no, nothing to add, just other than that it complies with the subdivision design standards of ninety-four dash three forty-two, therefore we're recommending approval. Again, it's just satisfying a condition of the two thousand twelve approval, so they can move forward.
Okay, very good. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution, resolution number one dash twenty-two, creating the plat entitled Kozakoff Platt. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, the factual testimony, and the findings that the request complies with all applicable, applicable provisions of chapter one seventy-seven Florida statutes, the comprehensive plan and the statutes in section ninety-four dash three forty-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eight point five, public hearing of resolution number two-two-seven dash twenty-one, a request by Brian Seymour of Gunster Law on behalf of Cohen Brothers Realty Corporation of Florida, LLC, for the approval of a level-three site plan for the construction of a new twenty-three story office building and a ten-story, one thousand one hundred ninety-five space parking garage with a total of four hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred seventeen square feet, including four hundred forty-three thousand two hundred ninety-six square feet of classic office space, fifteen thousand five hundred forty-one square feet of retail on the ground floor, a four hundred eighty square foot rooftop cafe at eight oh one South Dixie Highway. Mr. Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. I only have a forty-five minute presentation tonight. I'm kidding, I swear.
That's okay. You have an interesting sense of humor, Mr. Seymour.
Well, that's, my wife doesn't even add sense of humor at the end.
I didn't say good.
So if you want, if you want the score, Kristen's been texting me updates. For the record, Brian Seymour, Gunster on behalf of the applicant, I am not with Pelley Clark and Partners. As you know, Kristen Hawkins is the design architect. Everything you're about to hear and everything you're seeing is from Kristen. She couldn't be down here tonight. Mr. Cohen is here, along with his wife and son. Josh Long, Brian Kelly, and John Schmidt are also here with us this evening. So this is what we hope to be our final hearing for West Palm Point after several roads here and there. So this was really about a collaboration, a true collaboration between the design team and the city staff at every level. So you can, you can see here some of the folks that were involved in the last set of discussion points, but it's worth noting that since the CRA approved this design, more members of your staff under Anna and Rick's leadership have been involved, both the engineering, the design, making sure the, the water lines are where they're supposed to be, et cetera, as well as our team with Langin, Simmons and White, Schmidt, Nichols, working on that. So as you know, the changes that you asked for are about the parking structure. So we're going to focus on the parking structure tonight. So we compressed the typical parking levels so that we can get an absolute minimum, getting approximately eight feet on the east-west and fifteen feet on the north-south to provide a little more design element, a little more opportunity to utilize the public realm and widen up the streets. These are some of the innovative elements that Kristen has talked about before and, and is talking through me, if you will, this evening. So we have larger setbacks, sidewalks, the Paseo, moving pedestrians away from the traffic, which is a part of the complete street concepts. We enhance the street life, creating safe shady spaces, more opportunities to walk, bike, scooter, hopefully, increase incorporation of those non-vehicular mobility elements that are so important for this area of the downtown, and of course, we have space for public events and activities. One of the enhancements that you've seen is the additional activation around the structure, addressed not only with the sidewalk and the Paseo, but also with the active use spaces that are now on all four sides of this parking structure, all of which are double-high at eighteen feet four inches, which equates to two floors of the parking structure for each floor level of that active use liner. Again, this enhances the public realm on a daily basis, both on and above the streets. And then, of course, you have neighborhood events, pop-up events that could be part of that as well on a periodic basis. Architecturally, this reduces the impact and visual perception of the massing. The building facade design and materiality keeps with the tower using glass, silver metallic metals, and similar articulation. And of course, it conceals the cars. So this was the CRA, you all, as the CRA chosen scheme, very fun vote when we had a tie there for a moment. And architecturally, what this does is it really keeps with the tower. You see the curved corners that slender the mass, soften the impact on the site, the horizontal projections that reduce the height, these similar vertical projections of the tower that visually increase the height there. The top portion of the structure in the same form, sculpting language as the top portion of the tower, which creates a much more distinctive silhouette. And you see, of course, the notch on the east, which is similar to the notch that you see in the tower. Again, some of those innovative design elements that you see throughout this. The Paseo wall is also curved to mirror the tower. You have a two-way connection to the Paseo on both sides, so you, you cover from both Lakeview all the way to Okeechobee for that beautiful space that still remains. It was a critical part of the design of this project, as you've heard before. The sidewalks are now twenty-five, twenty-one foot wide on the north and south and twelve foot on the east and west, where they used to be ten on north and south, eight on the east and ten on the west. The Paseo also was able to get increased in size by a couple of feet to thirty-five feet. Our active use, as I mentioned, two levels. We've got thirty-eight four feet on the full eastern edge. It wraps the north and south edges for sixty to sixty-five feet with outdoor balconies for full length of active use. Going to continue a little bit forward very quickly. The connection of the active use to the pedestrians is also important. People can actually make eye contact from these active use liners to the street and have a real connectivity, as you can see with that clear glass in this particular rendering here. So you've also got some of the perforated metals, various densities to reach the code. We got twenty percent opens per side. So we've got there, looking east on Okeechobee, what you can see, you've got horizontal projections that here used, are the same way to use... used, or the same way to use a vertical fins on the tower, so they emphasize the horizontality. Here, we're vertically on the tower. The outdoor balconies, again, at active use, are wrapping those corners, which creates additional connectivity to the street and the outdoor. Here, looking at the paseo, you can see the canopy that covers the walking area, so that you've got a little additional cover from the rain. Again, you can still see there is that walk from the top of the parking structure back into the tower to utilize the space that will continue there, and we do have a condition that will require that to be completely green. There's not going to be the blank spaces you had previously seen. Here, you can see some night views, just so you can see that there's lighting, it keeps bright, it's a nice part of the community, it doesn't just shut down in the evening. Here's just the, from the right to left, I'm Jewish, so I'm going to go with the Hebrew. So on the right was the first iteration, then our second iteration, where you saw the green wall, and ultimately, the parking structure that matches more to the building, which was something that you all wanted to have happen. This obviously were some significant changes that we've gone through to get to this place, but the message was always the same. Do everything we could to keep it light on the land, keeping the topology, complement the tower design, keeping the elegance and the form to create something truly special at the entryway to the downtown. And Pelly Clark and Partners and Kristen and her team have done that in a pretty exceptional way. Again, with the input from your staff, there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of listening by all parties, working together. So here we are. We are done, hopefully. We've worked through the resolution, and all I want to add is that over the last couple of months, particularly, we were at the CRA, Anna Maria, Rick, the entire staff has worked incredibly hard to make sure we were on tonight's agenda. We talked Friday morning, we finalized a couple of final things, we worked through the resolution, we agree to the conditions of approval, and we do hope that tonight you will vote to approve West Palm Point. Thank you very much.
Any questions for the applicant before we get to staff? Commissioner Fox?
Not really a question, but just, I love it. I haven't seen it now in a month or so, and I forgot how amazing it looks, so just thank you to all involved. Brian, I know you had a few sleepless nights as well, but I appreciate everything that went into coming to this point, because especially when you see the three of them next to each other, I think it was worth the wait. I'm sorry that we put you through the things that you had to go through to get here, but it looks great, and thank you so much.
Any, any other comments for, or questions of the applicant? Okay, Anna Marie, staff, position?
Good evening, Anna Maria Ponte, City of San Antonio. For the, for the record, I just have to say that it was as painful for the applicant as for staff, so we are all pleased that we reached a resolution with this, and we have, the city has a great project. Brian already went all over the changes, so I'm just going to go over the waivers that are requested for this project. The original proposal has had 23 waivers, they were reduced to 18, but they're still, due to the complexity of the project, there are still some waivers that are necessary for the project. I'm going to go really quickly through them, but they are related, 1, 2, 3, with the maximum setback at the ground floor. The tower configuration requires some additional setbacks in there. Waivers 4 to 6 is to reduce the conditional setback required for parking uses above the fifth floor, and this is the one that we work most. The applicant basically widened the setback at the ground level, but the setbacks at the upper levels that is still required for parking uses is not in compliance, so there are some waivers required for floors, for the, well, this one is for the ground floor, and then the waivers on the upper levels, because they do not comply with the 31, but the building is still a step back on the top floors, so it's still the configuration allows for some relief for the upper levels. The waivers 7 and 8 is regarding the increase in the footprint on level 6 and 7, and then 8 to 11, and this is to the nature of the project and how this parking is a standalone project, parking and the tower is set aside. So we fully support that. Then, there is also some recommendations from staff for the treatment of the garage roof, so that it will fully have some landscape in the garage, not necessarily usable, but that will look green. Waivers 8 and 10 is, are to reduce the minimum percentage of active uses required at the ground floor along Okeechobee Boulevard, and this is a waiver that was with the previous proposal, but it's saw in there 20% along Okeechobee and 19% reduction of the required on Lakeview Avenue. And then, the major improvement is that the project now provides active uses on the second floor. It's a double-height second floor, so substantially hides and a good impact on the pedestrian realm with the active uses. So the project does not need a waiver on the second floor, but it still requires a waiver for those active use requirements on floors 3 to 5 along the tree frontages. Waiver number 15 is to reduce the number of, the total number of trees required along Quadrille Boulevard, from the nine required to the four, so we are recommending approval for that, but requiring those trees to be relocated throughout the project. And waivers 16 and 17 is to increase the maximum amount of, or the width of the curb cuts that are necessary for a project this size to accommodate the entrance to a parking, but also the loading, and also the size of the loading. So staff is supporting all the 18 waivers that the applicant has requested. We are recommending approval for Resolution 227-21, including the 18 waivers requested based on the finding that the proposed project complies with the standards in Section 94-35 of the LDRs. We are recommending 16 conditions of approval that are included in the resolution. I'm not going to read them, but they are in the resolution, and I have them in the next slides. This project was presented to the planning board on August 17, and was recommended approval, 7-0. Notice of the meeting was published on the planning, on the Palm Beach Post, September 10, 2021, and notice was sent to all the property owners. That completes the staff presentation. I have the listed of all the conditions of approval, but unless you decide to do, I'm not going to read them.
And the applicant has accepted all the conditions, correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Mr. Cohen, thank you so much for your patience and your work with us. It is really beautiful, so thank you, and we look forward to working with you on this project. Anna Maria, you went very quickly through those waivers, and I appreciate that, but I just wanted to go back to the one about the trees, because I think you had a second point, and I just wanted to make sure I understood, so there's a waiver on trees, but they're going to be relocated somewhere else, that, I guess, the recommended condition. I just wanted to go over that, if you could.
Yeah, so the code requires that there are supposed to be nine trees along Quadrille Boulevard, but because of the drop-off area, they cannot be relocated in there, so we're recommending those five trees be located somewhere on the open space or the paseo in the interior of the project.
So they will still be on the property?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to everybody who helped to work to put this together. It will be a record in that I have zero questions, just a statement.
I'm sorry?
I know. It's a record this evening, but for the record, I did wear a navy dress and a red shoe. Scheme DX, Scheme DC forever, right? I do want to say thank you, though. Scheme X looks wonderful. I'm glad that we've worked through this process. Mr. Cohen, you're here that we can, I can say to you face-to-face, thank you to you and your team for working very hard on this. I know we did go through a lot of rounds, but this is how the process works, and I think that we have a better product for it, so very thankful to that. So thanks to all the teams that worked on this, Anna Maria, Rick, your team, CRA, and everyone that put their time and effort into this. Looking forward to a great project, thanks.
I too would just like to thank Mr. Cohen, it could have been very easy for you to walk away from this. I'm sure it was not the easiest process, and, but thank you for your persistence. I think we will come out with a very fine product. Your reputation precedes you in terms of the quality of buildings that you erect, so I'm looking forward to that, to seeing the finished product. I'm looking forward to having you as a member of our community. Hopefully, this isn't something you just build and sell and move away. That's not your reputation. So it'd be great to have you as part of the West Palm Beach community. And Brian, as always, thank you for your patience, sir, and I know it wasn't easy, but you hung in there, hugged it with staff, and Anna Marie, and the other parts of development staff, thank you all for continuing to wage the battle for quality. And thank you to my colleagues on the dais for putting your collective feet down and insisting on getting us to something better. Anything else from the dais? We do have one card, Sandy Makovich.
Sandy Makovich, West Palm Beach. It sounds like the Cohen Brothers are there. I didn't sit in this chamber for nothing. I'm going to read the statement I was planning on reading, and it sounds like the Cohen Brothers are going to vote positive. This is what they went through to get to tonight. The tent site is a piece of city-owned property that has been dormant and in its sewer for 24 years until the Cohen Brothers had a vision to build West Palm Point. Once the building is up and a certificate of occupancy is issued, Mr. Cohen will pay the city $1,280,000 a year. Due to the length of time it is taking the city to decide this project is worthy, residents will lose out millions of dollars in revenue. August 17, 2020, City Commissioners, acting as the community CRA, voted unanimously for this project. Commissioner Kelly Shuf has a problem with the project's garage. She constantly states, "Make it not look like a parking garage." Cohen, along with his architect, has been back and forth with the city trying to appease Shuf and came up with the living green wall. Mr. Cohen, without a brick being laid, has spent well in excess of $1 million to date trying to please you people. Commissioner Peruzzi asked the city clerk if there are any comments emailed to the city. There are 77 comments to be read. Due to the amount the clerk has advised, who just read the name and addresses, and if they are in favor or opposed to the project. All 77 comments were opposed to the project. The vast majority who oppose live in my area, District 2, and live many miles from the tent site. Questions have been asked why the city has refused to give the green light for the project, and using common sense, I believe the interest of Related comes before the Cohen Brothers. November 2021, real estate firm Related Companies held a groundbreaking ceremony for their building called One Flagler that can be completed in 2024. The city and firm are also commemorating the completion of a new building called 360 Rosemary. Related already has banner-type signs on the fence with pictures of the view of the ocean from your office and other advertising pics to get tenant. The general consensus is you want it to get Related's project built so that Related could get most of it rented out.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
You're not welcome.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Your time is up. All right. Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 227-21, granting the waivers and approving the site plan. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the factual testimony presented, the staff report, consideration of the planning board recommendation, and the standards listed in Sections 94-35, 94-108, and 94-109 of the zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we will now move to comments from the public. We have a few cards here. Just call out the names, Jan Motter, Shante Kemp, and Sandy Makovich. Ms. Motter, Jan Motter?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and watch the process of this city as it moves and develops. The future looks super bright, but the reality of living in the city sometimes needs to be discussed. Again, my name is Jan Motter, I'm the acting president of the Vidado Hillcrest Neighborhood. We're located in the south end, and we are a beautiful, historic, diverse, and inclusive community. I was called on Christmas Day by a concerned citizen about sober homes being developed on Magnolia Street. It's in the Hillcrest section next to the Vidado. The neighbor was very concerned about the activity. She must have been, it was Christmas Day, you know? So a few years ago, a sober home on Oak Street was not properly monitored, resulting in two residents overdosing and passing away. The neighbors were saddened, outraged when it happened, so you can imagine their thoughts when we found out that two more homes were being developed. I did go to the Magnolia Street area, met with the person. While we were talking, we met the man who was in charge of this development. His name is Mr. Ross. He was informative and very nice, but we still made some inquiries on our own. We called zoning, permitting, every place we could think to call to find out about what's going on. And I talked to Mrs. Van in zoning, and she gave me a reasonable accommodation table for sober homes, which these homes are not on that list. We couldn't find any permitting other than fencing, and one of those permits were actually pulled under the previous owner's name. The properties are 1136, 1132 Magnolia Street, and again, we couldn't find the information we wanted. Mrs. Van did state that in the zoning, that these sober homes apparently can't be closer than 650 feet, and these houses sit side by side. Right now, both homes are occupied, and we have no idea how many people are living there now. But I will be clear, the Neighborhood Association concern is safety for all residents. That includes our old ones and our new ones. We're asking the city to look into this specific case to ensure that the owner and the city maintain a legal and safe environment for all. I did make note of that, and all these developments, they had kind of like a community outreach, but, no, sorry.
Thank you. If you want to just send my office an email, we will certainly look into it. Our hands are somewhat tied by our state legislator as to how we can regulate sober homes, but we'll see if they comply with all the applicable city regulations, but give me the address, and, or if you could actually talk to the gentleman behind you, Assistant City Administrator Fonda, give him the address, and we'll check into it, see what we can do.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Shante Kemp?
Good evening, Commissioner, Mayor. My name is Shante Kemp, and I will be speaking on the COVID center that is located at Gaines Park. It's creating a traffic hazard in the Roosevelt Estate North, and if I could submit this to the clerk of the design, so that the commissioners could see what the residents of Roosevelt Estate experience every day, because it's open seven days a week. Every entrance to our neighborhood is completely blocked. The entrance and exit to North Mangonia Lane is blocked, curved around to Palm Beach Lakes. All entrance to Palm Beach Lakes on the service road is blocked. At the top of 13th Street is blocked, which creates a blind side if you're trying to go out towards Australian. The entrance and exit to Mangonia North is also blocked, so that blocks our entire community in. For the past three weeks, I have been getting up at 4:00 AM or 5:00 to barricade the bottom of 13th Street from the of 13th Street from the pile of traffic piled up on 13th, which causes residents' driveways to be blocked. In the meanwhile, people are lining up at the park 4:00 a.m., 5:00 a.m., which creates issues for the bus stop in the morning. My daughter's bus stop is on the corner of 13th Street and North Mangonia. The bus cannot get down the street, neither can the garbage or trash pickup. It has resulted in the driver having a hard time to pick up the trash. He cannot turn the truck around because there are cars lined up and wrapped around Palm Beach Lakes at 6:00 a.m. There is no one guarding this at all, unregulated. On Saturday, Sunday, the COVID center is not open until 2:00 p.m. However, there are cars lined up at 6:00 a.m. in the morning, which is an eight-hour wait in a car. Gaines Park, it has never been designed to service the entire Palm Beach County. It was only designed to service the local needs. Our neighborhoods never get a break. There are hundreds of cars floating in and out of our neighborhood seven days a week. I have some solutions. Move the COVID center to the bottom of Gaines Park where traffic can flow out onto North Mangonia, reconfigure the traffic at the top of Gaines Park in Australia, just like it was for the water distribution when we had water contamination. Partner with Royal Palmer Wellington to open up COVID centers in that area. Place a patrol car at the bottom of Gaines Park if you can't reconfigure it so that traffic is regulated at 5:00 a.m. Place a digital sign at the entrance of Gaines Park, alerting people what time the site opens. Currently, there is no sign. There was a paper sign, which is now wet and is on the ground, where no one can see it. Have a Plan A, B, C. If there's an uptick in the COVID spike again, we won't be inundated with so many people going in and out of our neighborhood. It is a disaster. I would like to send a special thank you for two commissioners that responded to my email. That is Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Shalonda and Sergeant Lewis of West Palm Beach Police.
Thank you very much. We will continue. We're well aware of the difficulties the neighborhood has been having there. We'll continue to work on it. Ms. Johnson, can you sit down with staff and see if there is a way that we can come up with a more efficient way of getting, moving people in and out? And I know I've been talking, bring the police department into that meeting so they could, you know, help us with traffic control, signage, et cetera, please.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Makovich.
Sandy Makovich, West Palm Beach. I read this agenda at home in my armchair. I pull it up on the screen. You get to these meetings. There was a new item, first one discussed at today's meeting. It's a surprise to me. The Cohen brothers that you just voted on, on their agenda, staff recommends motion. This item to be continued to the January 24, 2022 City Commission meeting. There are people that are interested in the Cohen brothers' project and how this city is, for lack of a better word, jacking them around. And they would have been here tonight, except I called them and said, "Don't come. It's been taken off the agenda." Whoever's doing this agenda, you need to get on the ball. People pay attention to this. They want to know what's going on. At the beginning of this meeting, Keith, I would make a suggestion that you go back and watch the first few minutes of it, because you were so disrespectful to our city attorney that people in the audience actually text me, said, "Who was he talking to like that? Who the hell is he talking to?" Two different texts. You were rude, you were impatient, you had a total lack of respect for her, and I could see the anger. You were angry, and you interrupted. The woman's doing a job. She's trying to explain something to you, and you talk right over her like she's not even sitting there. You interrupted her. We can't do that, remember? Now, you sat here tonight, and I saw three times that you coughed into your fist. Coughing. The last time I was here, and you had me removed by the cops for refusing to wear a mask. I was not refusing to wear the mask. I said, "I will put mine on when you put yours on." You had me marched out of here. I went peaceably, no disrespect to the cop, I went peaceably because I've got a dog at home I've got to think about. I've got a plan for her, okay? So at my next meeting, I'm going to come in here with a mask, I'm going to sit hopefully in my favorite seat, and I'm going to remove my rask. I'm taking it off. And I'm hoping you called the police.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Sit down, please. Sit at, with somebody, you know, sit her down. Thank you.
Have him put on a mask.
It's not about a mask. Your time is up.
Say a prayer his is too, will you?
Okay, it's time for comments from the commissioners. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Considering the time, I'll keep my comments brief. Want to wish my colleagues and all of our residents and businesses a Happy New Year. It's an exciting time to be here in West Palm Beach. There's, you know, so much to look forward to, and I really am looking forward to seeing what this new year brings for our great city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Warren, we'll try to switch it up here.
Thank you. About 11 years ago, I started a business in an area where we saw a lot of stagnation, deterioration, and blight. And sometimes we saw buildings that were broken into, cars that were broken into, because there were so many vacancies, there were different, various crimes in the community. So I petitioned the commission at that time to support public-private partnerships because I knew that it was necessary in order to see things change. We knew that public-private partnerships were necessary to see commerce in the blighted communities, to see job creation, housing, and education through exposure to different people in the community. It was very important to me at that time that we look at inclusion and opportunities for everyone to have an improved quality of life. And therefore, we supported a lot of the things that are taking place today with the affiliated project with Nora, with different things that are happening in the communities that have historically been underserved. And as I think about the racial equity plan, and I've gone through all of the bullet points that were listed, I think that in order to achieve racial equality, we have to have racial equity first. And it would be important for us to consider a community benefits tool as an equity tool to help the employees, the future employees, to help disenfranchised community to benefit from the development that's taking place all over West Palm Beach. I think it's important that we recognize inclusion and inclusion opportunities for all. As rents rise, as housing prices rise, there are still economic groups that are left out and are not feeling the benefit of all of the things that are taking place. And I think that it's important for us to remember them and to do everything that we can to implement policies that affect their quality of life. I'm hopeful that we'll look at something similar to art life or art in public places and the successes of that program, and look at similarities that we can glean to implement that can be beneficial to all of our community and all of our citizens. I had the opportunity over the weekend to speak at an event with Palm Beach Promise Fund of Florida, and it was amazing. It was pink boots on the ground, and what they do is they work to overcome disparities as it relates to women having mammograms and having cervical cancer, and just ensuring that we do all that we can as a community to close those disparity gaps and improve outcomes. Florida ranks 50th out of all 50 states for women under 65 who have insurance. That has led to delays in care and progress in prognosis. So the Promise Fund of Florida works to overcome that. I encourage you to find out more about the organization and do anything that you can to support our local nonprofits as they support our community and the people that are most
Thank you, Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to mention tonight about the Roosevelt Estates, the issue with the COVID testing. While I'm so happy that we are, you know, able to offer that, I've been hearing from a lot of residents who they wake up in the morning, they have cars in their driveway, they have, their sprinklers have been knocked out. So I know that, you know, in the past, for food drives, we were having cars come through the Australian entrance, which I know that they get backed up there too, but it's not affecting the neighbors and the residents in the same way. So I would just ask if there is any resolution, if you could let us know so that we could communicate with people that are getting in touch with us, just to let them know that we're making changes. That would be appreciated. And I just wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow, there is a special election, two special elections, for congressional seat District 20, that was Elsie Hastings' seat, and also for Florida State House District 88, which was Omari Hardy's seat. So I just wanted to remind everyone that turnout has been not particularly the best in the past couple of elections, and this is a really important opportunity for people to have their voices heard. So I just want to remind anyone who might be having an election in their district to get out and vote tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shof.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to you and staff for addressing the concerns at Roosevelt Estates. I know there's been a lot of traffic going in and out of there. I think it's important to note, too, since we were the first, I believe, in the area to open up our testing site, since then, the county has opened up Wells, and there's an additional site in Boynton, too. So hopefully, some of that traffic will be relieved, and hopefully, we will be out of the spike, too. But thanks to residents for coming with solutions and to Administrator for following up on some of those to see what we can implement to make it a better situation for everybody. Also, a thank you to Old Northwood residents who, before the holidays, found out the need of one of our local police officers and jumped into action. You saw a lot of their passion out here tonight regarding developments. They bring that same passion to everything that they do. They were able to raise up over $10,000 for the officer and her family, who she herself had some medical concerns, as well as she has a son that was very suddenly very sick. So thanks to those residents for jumping to action. Wanted to also make residents aware of a couple of events. The Chief Adderley will be having his crime meeting on Wednesday at 6:30 at the George Boys and Girls Club. So that's a regular meeting that he has with our communities, and the North End meeting is on Wednesday. And I'd like to invite everyone to the North End Community Update. So working along with staff in the mayor's office, as well as RISE, Esperanza Center, and NCON, we put together a Community Update Day. So staff has been really gracious to come out and have kind of a trade show where it's essentially City Hall comes to you. Mayor will give opening remarks, and we'll hear updates from NCON and RISE about what's happening in the North End. We've invited development partners in the area that have various projects to come and update us on their projects. It will be safe, socially distant. We'll have a couple of free giveaways and refreshments, and just a great day to get out, meet your neighbors, hear what's happening at City Hall, and have any needs addressed. So please join us there. And I know we're in the middle of a COVID spike now, so I think it's incredibly important that we all remain vigilant, stay safe, get vaccinated, get boosted, wear a mask, do all those things that we're used to doing over the last two and a half years, because, you know, I think there's more and more stories of people getting very, very sick. So up to us to keep everyone safe, and please do so. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. I wanted to thank Jan, but I think she left. She stayed throughout the whole meeting, who's the president of the Vidado Neighborhood Association. There are some, just, our neighborhood associations are fabulous, and they do community cleanup events, they support other community members in need, and I just am really appreciative when they come here to voice some concerns. And I had addressed this with our city attorney earlier, and I saw you go back there as well. So hopefully, we'll share that information with her and the community so that we can get that issue addressed. I also wanted to bring up the police chief meetings, because I think that there has been some confusion on the meetings and where they are and what's being addressed at each of the meetings. And so it's my understanding that the police chief is leading these meetings in different districts throughout the city so that we can address issues related to that district. And so I want to encourage residents to find out which one of those meetings is the one that's addressing the issues that they're concerned with. For example, some folks who live downtown, I think we're planning on coming to the South End meeting, and I always say that everybody is welcome to any of the public meetings, but the issues that will be addressed at the meeting in the South End on January 19 at the Cox Science Museum will be issues related to south of Okeechobee to our Lake Worth border. The downtown meeting will be on February 16. Is that right, Commissioner Fox, at 6:00 p.m.? And then Commissioner Shof mentioned the one that will be up in the North End at the Boys and Girls Club on January 12 at 6:00 p.m. So just wanted to clarify that, and thank you. I think the PIO is going to put out some information on that as well. My last comment is just that I have really enjoyed serving my time on the League of Cities Board, but my time is up on serving on that board. And so at this time, I'd like to offer the opportunity to one of my colleagues here on the dais to also then serve as the liaison from this commission to our Palm Beach County League of Cities. I don't believe it's something we have to vote on, but just that we all have the opportunity to serve on different boards, and I wasn't sure if any one of you might like that opportunity. Commissioner Warren has raised her hand. Is anybody else? Everyone else is sitting on their hands, so if there's no objection, then I will help make that introduction and pass that baton on to you. So thank you so much for doing that for our city. That's it, Mayor.
Couple of things. First, Happy New Year, everyone. We're going into our third year with this COVID stuff, so, you know, the cases are going back up. Please continue to take precautions against COVID, social distancing, masking. This Omicron variant is very, very pernicious and very, very contagious, so be careful. If you haven't been vaccinated, get vaccinated, get boosted. Even if you've done those things, they have what they call these breakthrough infections, so it's important. As to Gaines Park, we're continuing to monitor that situation. Fortunately, the county has opened up a few more testing sites, one in Lake Worth, one in Rivera Beach, and no out in the Glades. On our website, wpb.org, we have a list of the various testing sites that are available. Hopefully, that'll take some pressure off of Gaines Park. Do want to thank the neighbors in Roosevelt Estates for their patience. I know it has not been easy. I've been getting emails, the phone calls, but this is a very important service to our residents, so unfortunately, you're having to bear the brunt of the traffic, and we're trying to monitor that as best as we can. The other thing is, on February 4, I'm going to give my State of the City address in a 51 under the sound of my voice is interested, you could go to the Chamber website and register. Congratulations to our newest Assistant City Administrator, Jose Luis Rodriguez, on your promotion to that position, sir. Mr. Rodriguez will be overseeing human resources, finance, information technology, and the library. So the administrative team now consists of Ms. Johnson as a city administrator and Assistant City Administrator Amanda Fana, and Assistant City Administrator Jose Luis Rodriguez, who brings 22 years of combined experience in the areas of government, administrative, and environmental operations, human resources, and law. So we wish you the best. And finally, I believe it was yesterday or the day before that was law enforcement or the day before that was Law Enforcement Officers Appreciation Day. So, thank all, thanks to all of our law enforcement officers, uh, the two gentlemen in the back, but to our entire, uh, police department each and every day, uh, for placing their lives on the line, uh, to make us all safer. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.